Again, thank you very, very much for being here today. And I'm going to make this introduction very, very short and very concise. It is my honor to introduce the Lieutenant Governor for the state of Georgia, Jeff Duncan, who's here to share some remarks with us. And without further ado, I'll ask Jeff to come up. Please welcome Lieutenant Governor Jeff Duncan.
Thank you and good morning. Happy Monday. Every time I get a chance to walk into a room with people, I'm grateful for it, just to be able to get out and about. In fact, I was emailing back and forth with a very good friend and great ally of not only mine, but many of you here in this room here today, Mike Dudgeon, who's been a big part of my life, both personally and professionally. And I thought I was going to have a chance to get to meet him today, but I think he's in Florida watching on video here today. So Mike, thanks for what you've done for us. And thank you for your continued willingness, even though you're now going to be both feet in the private sector, continuing to help our office work through ways to improve education. But certainly, this has been an amazing period of time. I'm one of those eternal optimists. My wife says I'm not one of those that think the glass is half full. She thinks, I think that it's overflowing. And so when I look at periods of time like what we've continued to travel through, but over the last 12 to 15 months, I see areas of opportunity. I think that we've accelerated the need for so many different things around work and life and education. And so I look at opportunities for us to continue to find ways to improve and to better offer the services that we're all in charge of. You know, COVID has been something that has been so interesting to watch how we've all reacted and reacted. And it certainly has accelerated the need for so many different things. And it's helped us validate the need for different ways. As I travel the state, I look at education being delivered in different ways and formats. And I don't know if there's necessarily a perfect way to do it. There's just an opportunity for us to continue to pay attention to what we're doing and look for opportunities to take feedback and to deliver. But I really see three different scenarios that have played out through my time traveling. One is, you know, inside the urban environments and inside the cities. And I think it's a difficult model. I have some time with some great charities. And one in particular, I get to work with young men who play baseball. And really hearing their stories of how they've tried to dial into virtual learning and the challenges that they face. But really, it comes down to the teachers, and it comes down to the educators, and it comes down to the administrators that are willing to pour into them and continue to make great investments into their time and help them close those gaps. Then we've got students in rural areas of the state. That I was down in Crawfordville, Georgia, at a rural broadband event, which it was great to see this public-private partnership forming to look for opportunities to better deliver broadband. And we all know the importance of that. And we also recognize the challenges that that faces, the economic challenges and just the infrastructure challenges. But really spending time and talking to those kids and understanding what they've had to go through in trying to learn virtually. And once again, it came down to the teachers and educators and the superintendents and their willingness to really work with those students and with those families to try to solve their sets of challenges. And then you've got the suburbs. And I get to live and breathe this every day because I've got two kids in the public school system in Forsyth County. And I watch how we've had to navigate this. And I watch how there's all types of opportunities to learn in person and learn virtually and learn with a hybrid model and to solve all the riddles. But once again, it comes down to people. It comes down to teachers and principals and administrators and superintendents and school systems that are willing to take feedback and willing to understand the challenges that they face. And so it's so reassuring to me to see that we're working together as a team. And certainly, this group here is no stranger to having to tackle big issues and challenging issues as we move forward. And I'm grateful for it. So thank you for your commitment to the students. Thank you for your commitment to navigating through a very difficult time, but also the commitment to innovating. You know, I walk into a facility like this, and I almost was late because I was begging to kind of go around to the different labs and see this opportunities for us to deliver the next generation of thinking for our students. My big idea, and certainly you've probably tired to hear me say it, but I'm going to keep saying it until they run me out of office, is I want Georgia to be the technology capital of the East Coast. And for me, that has so many different features to it, right? It has one because I want businesses to move here now. I want them to bring high-paying, quality jobs now. But I also want our students, pre-K, kindergarten, all the way through 12th grade, to wake up and realize they have an opportunity to be a part of the 21st century. They have an opportunity to stay right here in Georgia and to develop the skills that they need necessary to be a part of a global economy, to run a business, to work for a business, to innovate, to strategize, to invent. And to me, that's really the opportunities that we're delivering to these students here today. And the decisions that we make is making sure that we have those operating systems in place to allow them to just, just that spark come alive, right? Like, you think about this, if you were an author or, and you look back across your curriculum and your educational track, there was that one English teacher that just, that spark in you that made you believe in yourself, right? If you're an athlete, like I was, there was that one coach, I can point to that one moment in time on a baseball field where a coach looked at me and said, "You've got something special, right? You've got something in you that nobody else on this field has. Now go work on it. Go develop it." And I had the tools to do that. I had a field, and I had a batting cage, and a pitcher's mound, and a catcher's, and practice, and a weight room. And so technology is really that opportunity for us to develop and advance those kids that just maybe don't have it right there in front of them at home. But if we can just deliver that opportunity, like in SB 108, that we've all worked hard on trying to just be that introduction of technology, that introduction of opportunity. And I think we're just at the tip of the iceberg with it. I think we can look for opportunities to expand that to elementary school and middle school in 159 counties and 100, I think, what are we, 186 school systems? Looking for opportunities to really instill that in them and see that that is truly the pathway to success as we move forward. I'm grateful to partner with a governor that certainly sees that as a vision as we move forward, certainly sees it as a pathway of success for folks in every zip code, in every part of our state, and students and families as we move forward. It was interesting, when I was in Telfarrow County the other day, got done with all the speeches, and there was this gathering of kids, which, students, which was fascinating to me that this was pre-K through 12, 186 kids in the entire system. And there was 10 or 15 of them there. And I couldn't wait to run out after all the, I'll say boring speeches, because I was one of the boring speeches, and go out there and just talk to them and just ask them what they're doing and what they're... We spent 10 or 15 minutes talking about video games and programming and coding. It was just a fascinating conversation for me. And it just reinforced that, you know what? We're on the right path. We're doing the right things. We've started out really well, but we've got a lot of great work in front of us as we move forward. I want to take a minute and thank this group's willingness to partner with the charter schools and really trying to help us move and advance that model forward in a non-competitive, but just an opportunity for success as we move forward all across the state. It obviously looks different in every county and every location. But ultimately, at the end of the day, I think if we really put the student at the center of every decision we make, and sometimes it's easy and sometimes it's not easy. But if we truly always continue to put the student at the center of every decision that we make, I think we'll ultimately get to the right pathway and the right success model as we move forward. Also want to thank, I know there's a number of you here that helped us through this process, but something that was very near and dear to my heart, and if Mike's watching, hopefully he hadn't turned me off yet. SB 47, the Special Need Scholarship here in this session, was something very, very near and dear to my heart. We have gotten an opportunity in Forsyth County to see an excellent model of how to take great care, like so many other school systems have poured a tremendous amount of money and resources in. But not every certain situation, not every sort of condition is able to be tackled by every single school system. And so looking for the opportunities to partner with the families and to be able to give some options and some availability to, once again, put the student, no matter what their disability is or their disadvantage is, put them at the center of opportunities. You know, I always look at this difficult situation, and I had no idea that there was all these moving currents in rural areas and urban areas around different opportunities around school, school decisions. The unfortunate part of this, and I think you guys unfortunately have to face this lens, look through this lens, of perfect. We will never find perfect in education. We will never find perfect in tax reform. We will never find perfect in criminal justice reform. We will never find perfect in anything that we try to do. But we always try to strive for it. We always try to accommodate and make decisions that best fit, but we're also willing to make adjustments as we go forward. And I think that's the most important part, that's the most important trait that we can take, a lot like the business world. You know, so many people here in other lives, you're intersected with the private sector. And that really truly has always been the signal, the sign of success for a successful company, is one that's willing to ask big questions, make tough decisions, and then make adjustments as you go forward. And to me, I think that's a continuing opportunity as we, as we move and as we try to make these big decisions forward. Can't tell you what the future has in store for you, but I can tell you that it's bright here in Georgia. We've got a lot of great days in front of us. We've got, you know, we not only have the attention of the southeast, we not only have the attention of the country, we have the attention of the world. And that's a pretty neat spotlight to be in, right? As I drove over here from Forsyth County, come down 400, across 285, up 75, I mean, just passing the businesses and the communities that, and the community development that's out there, we've got something special here. I think it'll take us 10 or 20 years to look in the rearview mirror and realize that we have truly crossed into one of the most monumental periods of time here in the state of Georgia, as we continue to look for opportunities to grow and harness our potential, right? Potential that, quite honestly, is going to shape the world as we look for opportunities to invent and innovate around healthcare, around technology, around cyber, around fintech. I mean, I could just go on and on and on and on. One of those areas to try to harness that potential is with Partnership for Inclusive Innovation. And this is a group that we formed that is being chaired by Bud Peterson, former Georgia Tech president, and just an incredible friend of so many across the state, has allowed us to partner with a public-private partnership where we are now bringing in private sector decision-makers, folks that are facing real decisions every day in the real world and trying to intersect with Georgia Tech, is helping us to be the administrative angle. But also folks from all over the state, in the education systems, in the technical school system, in higher ed, all economic development, and looking for ways to execute this idea of becoming the technology capital of the East Coast. Because to do that, we've got to have things moving in the right direction in so many areas, right? We've got to not only be educating kids, which I feel like we're taking great strides in the right direction, we've got to be able to fill skills gaps for folks that are maybe migrating across career paths, whether they're coming out of the military or their job's been outsourced or downsized, as we try to find ways to partner with the private sector so that there's high-paying, quality jobs being generated every day in every corner of the state. And also, as we try to attract investment from literally all over the globe, billions and billions of dollars are flowing into Georgia. So as we try to harness all that, Partnership for Inclusive Innovation is a way for us to try to find ways through pilot programs to gather big ideas, big problems, and intersect those with private sector startups. Give them some seed capital and then launch them out of, out of the gates to be as quickly, to be successful as quickly as possible, and then allow them to go do what they really wanted to do, and that was to go integrate with the private sector, go make money, create jobs. And so as we move forward, this group's going to continue to hear a lot more from us as to ways that we can partner with you to deliver high-paying, quality jobs for generations to come. And I'll close with this, a lot of this is really selfishly driven for me. I've got three kids, three boys. I've got a freshman at Georgia, a freshman in high school, and a fourth grader. And me and Brooke want them to stay home. We want them to graduate from college, or the military, or technical school, or whatever their business opportunities are, their career paths are for. We want them to think of nowhere other than Georgia to raise their families and to run their businesses and to start and keep their careers. And so I think that's a selfish initiative, but you know what? That's one that I think we can all share with. We can all understand that this is a great place to call home. It's a great place to run your business, and we want to make sure it stays that way. So thank you so much for your sacrifice. Thank you for all the work and the decisions that you make here. Thank you for the governor and his team that have continued to put us in a great position to balance lives and livelihoods through a very, very difficult period of time in our lives, but one that we'll certainly look back and know that we've made great decisions on. So thank you. God bless you and have a great week.
It's a very hard act to follow, so I'm just gonna, I was asked to do introductions, so I'll keep those brief. And we do appreciate Lieutenant Governor, his vision and leadership for the state of I usually stay at the office quite a bit. I don't leave the reservation very much. And I joke that if I try to get out of the Twin Towers, my ankle bracelet starts going off. But when I do get out and we go to national conferences and talk to our counterparts, Georgia is really seen as a trailblazer in a lot of different areas. And one of those areas is around assessment and innovation. When US Ed and Congress passed, they passed the law and US Ed announced the program, the IADA, for innovation and assessment, what we heard at the beginning was there could only be one application, one option. Georgia, being the type that we are, said, "That's not enough for us." We had two great district-led initiatives. One was NAVI and the other was GMAP. And we advocated on behalf of those to put in our application, and we earned approval from US Ed for that to be part of Georgia's application. So we actually have two systems that are going down that road. NAVI, as I mentioned, Eric Arena is here. He's superintendent of Putman County Charter System. And of course, we had Dr. Laney Bradshaw. She's the founder and CEO. NAVI Education, she's also the associate professor of quantitative methodology. I didn't even, even want to try to Google that, at UGA. And then on the GMAP side, we have, of course, Dr. Grant Rivera, superintendent of Marietta City Schools, Dr. Belinda Walters-Brazel, deputy superintendent of Marietta City Schools, Dr. Michael Honakey, or director of assessment in Marietta City Schools. Grant, I don't know who's back at the, at the central office manning things, it sounds like it. And of course, we had Dr. Michael Tapler, who is a psychometrician, didn't Google that either, from Clayton County School District. So I think we're starting off with GMAP first. So if y'all want to come on up? Do we have a clicker? That sounds perfect. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you very much for allowing us to present today. We're very excited to get back in front of you. I do have to let you know, I got here a little early, so I saw many of you come off the bus this morning. And it reminded me of when I was with you back in 2018, when we started this initiative and we were doing the bus around Jekyll Island area. So it's nice to have you here in Cobb County. My commute was much shorter this morning, so I appreciate those of you that made the trip. So if you'll go ahead and pull up the slide presentation. Thank you. And you can go ahead and advance. So I know we have a limited amount of time, but I want to go ahead and just kind of run you through the agenda, the items that we're going to cover. So I'm going to kind of take the first agenda item. So what is GMAP? What have we been up to since the last time we presented? All right, awesome. And then we'll bring up the other team members, and we'll kind of rotate you through like where we are in the process and what we're doing with our different pilot testing and give you our timeline. So the last time we were in front of you guys, we were a team of about seven. So if you look at the slides, you'll notice the schools over here under collaborative members in the blue. There were seven districts who all currently were using MAP. I think many of you are familiar with MAP. It is a growth assessment tool that's used in almost 80 districts across the state of Georgia. And when the application opened for the innovative assessment model, we pulled together and said, "Hey, I think we could kind of put something together that really works for us if we could work with NWEA and kind of embed some of the things with standards and do an assessment that we're already doing with our students and give us the time back in the classroom." So we were very excited that Georgia sent our application off to the federal government and that we received that approval in 2019. What you'll see in front of you is that we've grown a little bit since the last time we were in front of you. So we actually have a very active board. Our board serves as our collaborative members. And that board, as you'll see there, are the board, we meet as a whole district, all of us, every first Friday of the month. But the board under collaborative members are the ones that actually have voting powers with our delegation for the GMAP consortium. Since that time, we've added on affiliate members. Affiliate members are members who are new to coming on. They have the opportunity to move over to collaborative partnership after a year of being in the GMAP consortium. And then you'll see down at the bottom, we have participating partners. So those are school districts who might not have the personnel to be fully involved in all of our meetings. They're welcome to attend, but they don't have voting rights at this time. But they certainly are working with us as we work through our question development, alignment, and all of our correlational studies that have to take place in order to pull off a statewide assessment model, which we're trying to put together with GMAP. So I would be very remiss if I didn't tell you that one of the best things about this has been the collaboration of all these districts working together. So you'll notice we're from all over the state, and we really spend every Friday, the first Friday of the month, together as a bunch of districts trying to decide like what's best for our students and what's best for our teachers, and how can we really use instructional time to drive what teachers need most, to know where their students are. Despite the pandemic, we've been very fortunate that we've been able to administer our assessment virtually. So we've been able to kind of monitor where our students have had instructional loss and where we need to attend to those gaps. So at this time, what I would like to do is turn it over to Dr. Tapler, and he's going to walk you through where we are with GMAP and why we're using it this time. So thank you very much.
Morning, everyone. All right. So the YGMAP Assessment Partnership, as Belinda has mentioned before, when we first started this, a lot of districts were out there doing their own thing with innovative assessment application. We were one of those districts, we're looking at different programs and partnerships, maybe with Fast Web. And what we wanted from the very beginning was an adaptive test, because we didn't want to limit the growth of our children at a particular grade level. We wanted to make sure that we know where they are on a grade level and what their potential are for grade levels above, and if there's any gaps to fill below. So we went with MAP after looking at different assessments, PARC, different vendors of that nature, going NCSA, which is a national assessment meeting, and meeting with a lot of them. So when we heard that Marietta and other schools were going to go for that, we said, "Well, let's go ahead and partnership together and make this a collaborative effort." And through that time, we've grown a little bit. MAP is in now 82 districts in the state of Georgia. So out of 186, from what I just heard, roughly one-third, well, more than one-third. So we're growing. And I think people see the value in that, because this year, as we know with the COVID and the crisis that has happened, teachers were able to pick up learning if they used MAP in the spring, which is great. So they didn't have a gap in understanding where to pick up and what to do. They could use that assessment and pick up learning from that student and carry on to the next grade level, to the next skill level that needs to be obtained, and also proficiency. So with MAP growth, growing across the state and across the country, we thought that it'd be also great to have some norm information for our students as well, so we can know how we're doing in Georgia and also across the country. So with MAP, we got all that information in some. So the what and why. So now, we're applying innovative assessment, and we thought innovation was something that's not currently being done, not a 2.0 version of what we have right now, but something that's a little bit more on a grander scale. Like I mentioned before, we wanted to create coherence across instruction, I'm sorry, across testing and assessment, so that the assessment now becomes an assessment for learning for students. And what that really means is that we just don't give assessment as a one-shot and that's done. It could be carried on, like we said, like I said before, to help bridge those gaps in learning for students. One other thing that we looked at is the growth. The fall to spring across grade levels and streamlining of the test here are great, especially for those districts that don't get proficiency at the end of the year. And what I mean by that is that sometimes you'll have school districts that may be working right up to that grade level, say, for example, a kid is in third grade, but he's going to fourth grade level to get to the next level. Well, that teacher worked to get him there, but didn't quite cross, didn't quite cross the fourth grade's threshold for proficiency. With this test, you can see the growth from where a student comes to a teacher, to where they're going next. And we can hand that student off to the next teacher to make sure that growing continues. So there's a continuum in growing. We get to eliminate some tests, such as an ITBS for normative testing, if you want to get a test that's going to give you something for gifted screening. So all those different things, we just really loved about it. So again, it's a solution, and it's called Through Year, and it's given three times a year, in the fall, in the winter, and the spring. Now, the fall and winter look the same when we give the test. We're going to look at where they are in the fall, test again in the spring, in the winter, I should say, so that way a teacher can pivot their learning. So if a student is losing some skill along the way, we can know where to pinpoint their performance and get them where they need to be. Now, in the spring, we're looking at some of the proficiencies, so we can use that for US Ed, for our state assessment, for all the things we need for the state assessment. That is what's new about this assessment versus MAP that we're currently using. This here will yield us some of the proficiency scores and norm reference information that we can use across the board. One more thing we want to add here is that all these standards, I should say, all the items that we're using will be, will be aligned to the Georgia Standards of Excellence, which is something new. Right now, we're working with ELA in math. Science is coming on board soon. We'll have grade level performance in fall, winter, and spring. And again, I keep harping on this, the norm reference information and achievement growth percentage from fall to winter and spring are great. Now, if you, again, if you look at a student that may have some gaps in learning from spring to fall, because you know you have that, what they call the summer slide, it's great for that as well, because they'll tell a teacher or a school where they need to navigate professional dollars to get the student where they need to go for that learning continuum. So the continuity of scores and use of MAP is also great when we look at the lower grade levels, starting at kindergarten, because we could use MAP, same type of scoring, test giving in the same, same manner during the school year. There's no, no difference in what we're doing. So you don't have to stop the whole school day and give assessment or a school year, I should say. And this assessment could be moved on to the third grade assessment. And what this means is that a kid coming from second grade to third grade that's going to take that third through eighth grade test for a state assessment, they can use that information off that test to help their learning. So teachers are able to pivot throughout the school year to know where to address deficiencies and needs throughout the school year for students and give what we call individualized learning for all the students. So I'm going to stop here, because I know our time's just about up, and hand it over to Mike, he can tell you the rest here.
All right. So my name is Michael Honakey and Director of Assessment. Welcome. Thank you. Basically, what we're doing here is we're trying to compare the, our Through Year through a traditional way of which we usually test, and that is, one, we will be testing three times a year. We're not going to wait till the end of the year, find out, "Well, did they make it? Did we do what we were supposed to? Were we able to pivot?" And that's the, the whole key is, in the fall and the winter, you have that information right away. It is the same information that you're going to have at the end of the year. And if the student isn't doing what, what we hope, we can pivot the very next day and start getting that child the instructional needs that they, that they deserve and that they need. The other thing is, is timely-based standards. It is totally based on our standards. We're going to be able to tell you right away where a student is, whether they're on grade level, below grade level, above grade level, and we will pinpoint those standards, give you an idea. I have yet to meet a student, no matter how smart you are, that you don't have a hole somewhere in your education. The question is, where's that hole? We're able to pivot and we're able to show you exactly where that is. So I'm a fourth grader, but I have this second grade skill that I still need. Here it is. And sometimes it's a 15-minute lesson, and finally, that, that just clicks for the student. And then all of a sudden, they're able to make gains that are unreal. The other thing is, is that learning, it shows that learning that it goes all the way through the year. We want to make sure that we are really hitting it all the way through, that normative data, mainly so that we have that right away. Not only are we comparing students here in Georgia, but we are able to compare across the nation. It also helps eliminate a test that Dr. Tapler hit upon, which is great. Plus, it gives us three opportunities to allow these students to qualify for gifted, have that first score. And then, of course, at the end, we have that, that spring informative performance. But not only do But not only do we have it in the spring, but we have it in that fall and the winter. That fall and winter build off of each other, so that then the spring comes in. It should not be a shock to us whatsoever where a student falls in the spring once they've taken that final assessment. We know where they are. What's our timeline? And that's really the key. Were we hit by the pandemic? Yes. Last year, without any testing whatsoever in the spring, did hurt. We were to do our field testing this year, but we were looking at it. We had to make a decision last June. And last June, we were like, are we going to test? Are we not going to test? Are we going to have the information that we need? So we did delay. So our field testing will be this time next year, so for ELA and math. And therefore, what we're going to do is we're going to field test, we're going to take the Georgia milestones. We will start that collaborating study and pending your decision and the Georgia DOE and whether or not we can start phasing out the Georgia milestones the following year. That is our ultimate goal, but it really comes down to that collaborating study for next year. Is our field testing for ELA and math? The very next year, in 2022, 2023, we will be Through Year, fall, winter, spring for the ELA math, and it will go forward. And then what we call our demonstration in 23, 24. In other words, be fully onboard, we'll have all our items field tested, we'll have a really good bank, we're going full force. Now, science, as you can see, is one year behind. So the field testing for science will be in 22, 23 for grades five and eight. And then there'll be that pilot year in 23, 24. High school, we were kind of waiting to see, well, what are the EOCs that we are going to be administered? We didn't want to do all this work, and oh, four of them are gone. So now that we know that, we have started that work, we just don't have a timeline that we can share with you today, because we want to make sure when we share that timeline with you, that's what it is. But the work has begun. We've started looking through the standards and doing the mapping and the whole nine yards with that. When we look at our allocation funds, so when we do receive our funds that the legislature so graciously allotted to us, this is kind of where we want to put those dollars. Since they are FY21 funds, we do need to spend them, for our understanding, this year, on this fiscal year, and then therefore go forward. But you can see, we're putting a lot of it into professional learning and then the content review. This June is where we like to put a lot of that funds, because we have a lot of educators coming together, Georgia teachers, and they are going to be going through all the items. And they're going to do the bias review and the whole bit and trying to figure out, okay, where are we? What, are these items good and all this kind of stuff? And are they aligned to the Georgia standards? We're going item by item with, and it is our Georgia teachers. The Georgia Center for Assessment out of UGA is helping us through this whole process to make sure that we are truly Georgia standard. So therefore, we want to make sure that we have everything there. Of course, we'll entertain questions when the appropriate time. And via Zoom, we do have a couple of people from NWA. So if you give us a question we can't do, hopefully, somebody from NWA will be able to help you answer. All right, thank you very much.
Would you pull up the Putnam presentation, please? I am wonderful. I just want to say thank you for inviting us. Some familiar faces and some new faces. So thank you. I'm Eric Arena, Superintendent of the Putnam County Charter School System. And I want to thank you for allowing us to be a charter system. I heard Lieutenant Governor talking about charter and flexibility. And you heard Cameron talk about, in his business, he was talking about dyslexia, but in his business, he was talking about being disruptive. Part of being a charter system, charter school, is being disruptive, figuring out ways to do things better. So let me tell you a little bit about my story, our story, and then we'll go through this and be able to answer questions. But about seven or eight years ago, as we were looking for ways to help our teachers, we partnered with a professor from the University of Georgia to help build better assessments. What we needed was information that our teachers could use in the classroom every day to adjust what they were doing to meet the needs of our students. We started this journey long before the federal government put out this call for innovative or innovation in the nation. So what is NAVI? Well, NAVI is an on-demand, anybody, any teacher can pull this assessment up at any time when they're ready. And it gives students multiple attempts to demonstrate mastery. Because like myself or Cameron, who has dyslexia, we both have dyslexia. This is the first time I've said that out loud. But it was, it was very nice to hear a story of a successful person that's overcome disabilities. But don't we all have struggles? And kids have struggles. So they may not get it all at the same time. So what we wanted to do is to develop an assessment that was on-demand for teachers, real-time, that kids had multiple opportunities to prove competency, and that it was immediate feedback. So that's what we went about. If you'll go to the next slide. Oh, I've got, I'm sorry. Green button, okay. Where are we supposed to point? Takes a second. So when you leave here, if you can answer these four questions, you'll be part of the NAVI team. How does NAVI work? Why are we using NAVI at local formative assessments? And then how does NAVI work for the state and federal innovative assessment pilot? And why do we want NAVI for a state assessment? So like I said, it's real-time, teacher-driven. It could be modular for anyone in the state of Georgia, and it is directly tied to the state assessments. So there is a lag, isn't there? NAVI is going to monitor our standard by standard with short assessments given as needed by the direction of the classroom teacher. If in South Georgia, you wanted to start on standards two, three, and four, and in North Georgia, you wanted to start on standards one, six, and eight, and in Middle Georgia, you wanted to start on standards nine, 10, and 11, you have that flexibility. Aren't we accustomed in our society to sort of have that? So that's what we wanted to do. So what does it look like for the classroom teacher or for a student? In essence, as a student, you're trying to collect standards mastery. You're trying to collect badges. You're trying to learn these standards as we go through. So first thing for students, they're owning their learning, as they move through this. If there are twenty standards that they're supposed to learn over the next one hundred and eighty days, they're collecting those badges. But for a teacher, think about this, you already have the ability to sort. If you give an assessment and figure out that part of your class didn't learn it, you have the ability to sort and reteach with this assessment. So you can see that, and you'll have this presentation. I think the presentation is available for the board, so we won't labor on that. Just another example is that the green check means that the student has mastered it. An X on the teacher dashboard indicates that that attempt, they weren't successful. But that gives them other opportunities throughout the year to be re-taught and then to master it again. The lock means that the teacher hasn't opened that assessment for the students. So what's innovative? First of all, formative test as opposed to summative test at the end, and you get the results back at the end, and it's, the school year's already over. Formative, or formative means that it's, you're able to inform the classroom and the teacher, and the students and the parents know exactly where we are as we move through this journey. So it's within grades, across grades, if you're looking at weaknesses, and even potentially across the state. If all of a sudden, we started to recognize that everybody was having difficulty mastering a fourth grade standard, then the Department of Education or RESA could offer opportunities for professional development. So you have the opportunity to look not only within your school, within your district, within a RESA, and then potentially within the state of Georgia to move through that. That's not me. That's a great sound. Yeah, there wasn't, I thought I pushed the wrong button, but that means that kids are in class and kids are changing classes. So that's a great sign. So why are we using NAVI as our local formative assessment? I told you that we started this journey long before it became an initiative with the feds, because it benefits teaching and learning. When kids have efficacy and talk about what they need to learn, what they haven't learned, those things are powerful. It also guides innovation. We can't intervene to help a kid unless we know specifically what they're struggling with. And if we wait till the end of the year to take an assessment, it's too late at that point. Next is, how does NAVI work with the state and federal support? Well, I'm sorry, let me go back. This is, you talk about strategic planning and where we are. This, the assessments are standards-level. So as you go through, you can have conversations professionally within a team or a grade level. If certain teachers are more successful teaching certain standards, and then maybe new teachers are struggling with those standards, think about the collaboration within your departments, within your grade levels in order. And this helps to drive that conversation. And then also to talk about the conversation with parents. You know, your student needs to work harder, or your student needs to learn to read, as opposed to being able to specifically say, your student is struggling, your child is struggling with multiplying two-digit numeration. Those are the things that drive us as educators, and that's what's important for us. And you can see across a grade or across a school, you could start to see weaknesses within the standards. If all of a sudden, there are certain standards that are more difficult to teach and you need additional professional learning, that also gives you that opportunity. So we'll click through this. It's basically, we're creating learning maps for our kids and that we're creating basically an individual education plan as we move forward. Benefit students, student efficacy, they own it. Teacher personalized learning for each student. Student or school personnel support for teachers, because they have the information right there at their fingertips. Again, we said districts can support schools within their own districts. And then statewide, we have that opportunity as a look-in to see where the professional learning needs are. So we'll go through this very quickly. I can see that you are tired already of assessments. So stay with me just for a few more minutes, and then we'll get to this. So where are we with NAVI and why NAVI? Let me flip through here to get to this chart. Keep going. One more. That's the timeline that we talked about when we first initially put out the pilot timeline. This is the timeline that we're actually dealing with now. NAVI has been in existence, being used in schools now for four years. We, with the pandemic, it shut it down. We weren't able to give assessments last year. We're ready, Dr. Bradshaw's ready to do the analysis. And as soon as, we'll do the milestones this year. And that's our, that's, I believe that's what the state has decided, that we're going to do the milestones. So this summer, she'll be running the analysis behind the NAVI systems. So the item analysis has already been done. The item bank is constantly being developed, but we're actually using NAVI in our schools and have been using NAVI in our schools for years. From school systems that touch Tennessee, to school systems that touch Florida, to the coast and Alabama. It's a pretty interesting, diverse group. And much like GMAP and MAP, there's constant conversation, collaboration. For those of you that weren't with us during this journey, the conversation with GMAP and the collaboration with Cobb, even from the very beginning, has been very helpful. And it is, I just... I want to say that we're fortunate in this state to have a DOE and a state board that's willing to give us the space to be innovative. And that's what's exciting. Now, it's hard work. It'd be much easier just to stay in Putnam County. Do you know where Putnam County is? We're close to everything and next to perfect. We're God's country, Lake O'Conne, Rock Eagle 4H Center. If you don't know where that is, then... But it'd be much easier. Grant would probably tell you this, is that this has been a very difficult, heavy lift for his staff, because in the midst of all of this, we still have our jobs to do. We're still educating kids. We're still making sure kids are safe. Cobb does it different. We don't have three bells. I don't know what that means, but... But we want to thank you for the opportunity to maneuver and the space to maneuver, because I think, I know, competition, the ability to push, to be better, is going to make all of us better. And that's what I would say on behalf of Dr. Rivera and myself through this journey is just, thank you for the space, thank you for the opportunity. The Lieutenant Governor got out of here before, but they were instrumental in putting some monies into this budget in order for us to help move this forward. We're grateful for that. So I'm going to step aside. Dr. Bradshaw, is there anything that you'd like to add? Dr. Bradshaw will be here to answer any of the questions. She can talk all of the technical knowledge if you're interested in. But it's an on-demand assessment, given any time the teacher wants it. And at the end, so it's used for formative purposes to inform the classroom instruction. And at the end, you don't have to take a retest or another test. You've been accounting for all of the learning throughout the school year. Does that make sense? Okay. Then I'm going to step aside, if that's all right?
Scott, can you hear us?
I can.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. I'm Scott Sweeney, the Chairman for the State Board of Education. We appreciate you being here. And you have a stage, and we've introduced you as being with the National Center for Improvement of Educational Assessments.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you noted, so I assume you guys could see my slides, and I'll just tell the folks there when to advance them. I am the Executive Director. We go by the Center for Assessment for sure. I am the executive director of the, we go by the Center for Assessment for short. We've been working in Georgia for a long time, since, prior to 2010, and I, I coordinate the state's Accountability Technical Advisory Committee, so I'm pretty familiar with lots of things going on in Georgia. So if we go to the next slide, the second slide, I'm gonna just talk very briefly about the Innovative Assessment Demonstration Authority, or the, that's the fancy language in the federal law for this pilot. And then I'm gonna talk about some of the challenges that we face with this pilot. Once I finish that, I'll talk about what does it take to become the state assessment system and some key requirements, and then just some final thoughts. So we'll go to slide three, please. This should be a review, but I know there's new folks on the board, and if you don't live in this world, a lot of this stuff starts washing over you, and it's, it's hard to keep track. So this Innovative Assessment Demonstration Authority, Section 1204 of ESEA, or ESA, for those of you who like to keep track of those things, allows for up to seven states to, to pilot a, a different way of assessing. And then really, the key thing is that you could do a lot of things within your state assessment system. The key thing about the pilot is that it allows you to do it in a subset of school districts, as opposed to doing it statewide right away. Go to the next slide, slide four. So here are some key things, right? This was just said, assessments are not required to be the same statewide, and we see that in Georgia with both NWA MAP and the NAVI systems, as well as milestones still running for most of the students. It says, another key flexibility, assessments may consist entirely of performance tasks. That doesn't apply here, and that's actually a funny thing to put in law, because you could actually do that now in law, as long as you meet certain requirements. And a key thing here, and I think we heard this more with the NAVI system, assessments may be given when students are ready. So as opposed to the testing window opening April 15th, and everybody must test between April 15th and May 15th, I'm making up those dates, in, in a system, in, in an innovative system, you could actually decide when students are ready to test. We'll go to the next slide, slide five. There's, but, but, you know, they, they don't give away something for nothing, as we say with, with this law. So there are four major guardrails in the law, and these are critical. They, we have assessment quality, comparability, we have the, the need to scale, that means to spread the assessment statewide, and demographic similarity. I'll just talk very briefly. Demographic similarity just means, if you're gonna run this pilot, you can't run this in your highest socioeconomic school district or your lowest. You're supposed to have a representative sample of, of school districts that, that mirror the state's demographics. That doesn't have to happen day one, but it does have to happen for, for demonstration. I'm gonna talk about each of these other three in, in a little bit more detail through the presentation. So we go to the next slide. So I've been, I've been, so we should be on slide, I just got a text that we're having trouble keeping the slides, the slides to be up. So you guys should see slide six now. This, what I call is innovator's, innovator's dilemma. So I've been a, a fan, a cheerleader, a proponent of, of this Innovative Assessment Demonstration Authority since the beginning. In fact, I helped craft some of the language in the law when, at that time, Senator Murray and Senator Alexander were working, actually, this crazy thing we used to have once in a while bipartisanship, were working together to craft this section of the law. And, but I've, 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 I've had some concerns in recent years, and I've been working closely with New Hampshire, which was the second state to receive the authority. I've been working closely with Louisiana, the first state to receive the authority. And some of my concerns are, deal with these guardrails, comparability, scaling, quality, and then the resource issues is always a nagging one. Turn to slide seven, talk about comparability. This is a recent volume that I had the privilege of co-authoring a chapter, and this is the National Academy of Education. And this phrase that's in bold here, comparable annual determinations. It's a phrase that's kept me up way too many nights, because it's a key requirement of the demonstration authority. And what that means is that if I'm gonna call a student proficient, let's say, on any of these pilots, all things being equal, if I gave that student the milestones assessment, they should likely be considered proficient and vice versa. And in your state, you have even a little bit more of a challenge. If I declared a student proficient using the NAVI system, I would likely have to declare that student proficient if I was using the NWA system. So this comparable annual determinations, the annual determinations that we call kids advanced, proficient, or basic, or some other level, is a key requirement, and it's, it's not so easy. We in our field obsess a lot about comparability and, and linking and things like that. And just because things are correlated, so just because I say there's a relationship between two things, does not mean they're comparable, and that's very important to keep in mind. I wanna, this, this might be the least popular slide, slide eight. This notion of through year, because both of these assessments are through year compared with end of year. So I, in the presentation that you have access to, you could link to these two blogs just written by my colleague here, Brian Gong. And I, I strongly agree with what he said. He raised critical concerns about the comparability of through year to end of year assessment systems. He also raised some very important concerns about trying to use an assessment for both instructional purposes and accountability purposes. Let me talk about that just very briefly. You know, it's the, it's the old line, right? It's very painful to straddle a fence, and you're better off coming down on one side or another. And we say that in the assessment world as, as well. It's very hard for an assessment to serve multiple purposes well. If we're lucky, it could serve one purpose well, but it's very hard to solve multiple, to address multiple purposes very well. But Brian raised concerns here about this comparability issue, and I'll give you an example. If we test students at various times in the year, let's say I test the students in November on some aspects of fractions, and I declare that the student actually is able to deal with fractions in the way that I want. Or perhaps more importantly, they're not quite up to the level that I would hope that, at the proficient level that I would want them to be at. Well, I actually think if I'm doing my proportional reasoning instruction well, these kids will have a chance to develop their knowledge of fractions through the year. And so to declare them proficient or not early in the year on what they know about fractions is not really fair, right? Because I think it's gonna develop. Or you take something in English Language Arts. We know that kids, especially in the early grades, get better at reading through the year. They get better at writing through the year. If they don't get better, then what's the point of them being in the, in the class? What's the point of instruction? So that, that leads to these thorny issues. If we think they're gonna continue to develop, will students have another opportunity to show what they know and are able to do? Now, some say, well, maybe the end-of-year test will allow that to happen, but if you're already gonna do that at the end-of-year test, are you perhaps incentivizing over testing? That's something to think about. There's another side of accountability that's on slide nine now, that, that's a real challenge in this pilot. There's, one of the leading, the leading, I would say, experts in our field, Dr. Bob Brennan, who is the, literally, not just, not just figuratively, literally wrote the book on what we call test equating. How do you connect the scores from one year to another so they mean the same thing? So a score of 250 in 2019 means the same thing as a score of 250 in 2021. Well, Bob said, you know, perfect comparability would be a sign of failure if we're trying to be innovative, because there's these legitimate reasons for non-comparability. Unfortunately, the U.S. Department of Education doesn't share that view. And that's, and that's what you're being held to, is that the, the department really insists that your results are comparable, at least at the annual determinations level. Let's move on to talk about this notion of scaling, number 10, slide 10. And there's, I, I believe there's this fundamental tension in the pilot. Any, any of you who are involved in any sort of business, industry, or any other endeavor know that when you're trying to bring about some type of change, and a significant change, to try to do it overnight either means that it's not that big of a change, or you're issuing a mandate and the likely blowback might, might hinder that change. But what, what I've argued is that this push to scale these systems statewide is, is at odds with the notion to innovate. So the more innovative you are, the more challenging it is to scale statewide. And, and here, we only have five to seven years, depending on how you count, is, is a very fast timeline. Let's go to slide 11. And just for those who want to read more about this, you could actually, both these articles are linked, but it's, the notion of scaling is just not one thing. It's, scaling is multi-dimensional, it's hard to accomplish. It's the holy grail in our field when we talk about things like assessment literacy and things like that, trying to get it to everybody so that it works. Now, the state can certainly mandate, everybody's gonna do assessment X, everybody's gonna do assessment Y, but there's one thing, when you're, when you have a, a system that people have been used to for the last 20 years, when you ask them to change, it, you might get some pushback that are to deal with. Go to slide 12. So here's a case where you, 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 you might become the dog that caught the car, right? Is that, if, what if you actually do manage to scale at least one of your pilots? Well, and, and, you know, it is, it is, it could be like the dog that said, uh-oh, now I got it, what do I do? Because this is where the real work begins. If you thought the work was hard before so, the, the real work begins after you become the state assessment. And among many challenges, I'm just gonna talk about two. One involves the federal peer review requirements, and that's how the U.S. Department of Education is mandated to ensure that state's assessment systems meet very rigorous quality standards. And the other thing is this notion of quality control and quality assurance. So we go to slide 13. This is not a reading test, I promise you, but these are what they term the critical elements, and the way that this works, right? We have the law, ESSA, and Section 1111 of the law specifies these requirements. That got turned into the standards and assessment regulations, which then got turned into these peer review guidance. And in this guidance, there are seven critical elements. And you could see from this diagram, the elements in the light blue blocks is across the top, seven elements. Each of them have multiple parts to them. So there's things like assessment systems operations, how, how do you make this thing work? Technical quality focusing, especially just on validity. There's other aspects of technical quality like alignment and reliability, inclusion, quality of reporting, et cetera, et cetera. Now, we go to the next slide. So thankfully, we don't do this in paper anymore, but I'm old enough, I was actually, just a little trivia, my colleagues at the Georgia Department of Ed might not even know this. When, when peer review first occurred under, before, no, I left behind, under IS, ISSA, the, the previous instantiation of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, I was the state director in Wyoming, and we were the very first state to pass peer review, the first time peer review was ever created. And those were all paper submissions. I wish I could say that that picture was an exaggeration, but it, it wasn't. We used to have to send in like banker's boxes full of documentation and, and evidence to support what the, with the nature of our evidence. Now, thankfully, people aren't packing up these sorts of boxes anymore, but the, the submissions are electronic, but you still produce a whole lot of, of documentation, and the, the rigorousness by which it's reviewed, and the, the requirements for evidence are very strict. That's a good thing. The feds are spending a lot of money on this, and, and, and people are spending a lot of time taking these assessments. There should be these kind of checks. Another critical thing on slide 15, there's only a couple more slides, is that state assessments, and, and you could ask Dr. Timberlake or others, the worst thing for a state assessment director is if scores have to be reissued. That's, that's just about the worst day of professional career. Nobody's happy. The teachers who worked hard to get their kids ready, the parents and kids, state board members who have to, you know, have to deal with this, nobody's happy when scores have to be reissued. So to avoid that, states and others, and, and their test vendors engage in very rigorous quality control, quality assurance processes to ensure that doesn't happen. And this requires tremendous cooperation among the DOE, the, this DOE staff, the local education officials, as well as the state assessment vendors. And there's a variety of checks and rechecks that, that go on to ensure that the scores that are, are released are the scores that should be of record. Now, doesn't mean that you never have glitches, but goal is to minimize those. Last slide, so, second to last. So, you know, I always am thinking about, you know, why, why do we want to innovate? And so I think it's really important to be clear about the problem we're trying to solve. And we heard some of that from the previous two presenters, that they, they're starting to articulate this problem about usable information and things like that. But we have to be clear that, of the problem, and then the solution that we put forward is actually the best way to address that problem. Now, states and districts can innovate without IDEA, and in some ways it might be easier. For instance, states can include things like performance tasks, or technology-enhanced items, or other innovations within their state assessment systems without requiring, going through all the requirements of IDEA. States can move towards what we call more balanced or loosely coupled systems, and I believe Georgia's moving in this direction, where for instance, the state assessment system includes not just the end-of-year test like the milestone, but includes these along-the-way checks, these state-procured interim and formative supports. And so if the goal is to get more instructional useful information, then you could get it, but not have to have it, do this double counting for instruction and accountability. So there's lots of other ways to innovate. I, I won't torch you with, with much more of that. And then the very last slide. I just, for those of you who have any problems with insomnia or anything like that, there's put links to a bunch of different blogs and papers that we've been, we've been writing about this innovative assessment stuff for a long time, and you could see just some of the work summarized on, on those, those few posts. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, and stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Scott. Really appreciate your insightful comments, and this is a Q and A portion, so I would like to invite representatives from NAVI as well as GMAP to come up, and does anybody have any questions that they'd like to offer at this point in time?
I do.
We'll turn to Dr. Darnett.
Good morning, everyone, and board members, the rest of you need to buckle up, because I've been waiting on this presentation since I joined this group. And but, and I want to thank both of you, both consortia, for being here this morning. Without getting into the weeds of the design and the implementation, I'd really like to hear, because I know that you, you, you referenced this, both of you referenced this in your comments, but I didn't hear a direct response, response to this, how are your teachers responding to the new assessment format? How are your teachers responding to the new assessment format? Do they feel like it's burdensome? Do they feel like it's more helpful? Is teacher efficacy... Are you seeing any movement in that needle since you've started with the pilot? And I'd love to hear from both of you, if you don't mind.
And if you could step to the microphone, that'll be great.
So, one thing that we've been able to do since we put this in place is we've actually been able to eliminate some of the tests that were required to take through the state. So our teachers have been very happy, and I'll give you one example with that. So in kindergarten, teachers are required to give the G-Kid readiness and G-Kids. It takes up an incredible amount of time at the beginning of the school year, and so we were able to replace that the last year with MAP. So our kindergarten teachers were elated, because they got a ton of instructional time back. We also use the through-the-year assessment, meaning that it measures standards the whole way through. So our teachers are able to kind of tailor their instruction as they're going, but it also shows you for kids who come in and already mastered standards, that we're able to start taking students and go above level. When you just do an end-of-the-year assessment, you're waiting to see if they make the on-grade level. That's all you get a result for. We're able to really differentiate instruction, very similar to what Eric and Laney talked about as well. Teachers need real-time instruction. So being able to put that in place, definitely, teachers have been happy with. The other thing that I think that you heard in our presentations is we have teachers actively involved, participating in the construction of test questions, doing the validity checks, working with teams of psychometricians. It's a tough process. I think I said, when I spoke to you guys at Jekyll Island, several people said, "Oh, we're ready." And I'm like, "Nobody's ready right now. This takes a long time." There are a lot of studies that have to be done. There are linking studies that have to be done, and it's hard work, but it's work that I think we've pulled together and we've done really well with. So does that answer your question?
Yes.
I'm afraid that you're going to make set off.
John, I think that's an interesting question, and I'm going to be able to answer that on both sides. I believe that our teachers are starving for reliable feedback that they then can take to their classroom. I think good school systems and good teachers use formative assessments all the time. But it is that reliable, valid assessment of their work that they're hungry for. But then, when you, just like what MAP was talking about, Marietta, is that when you change your mindset to teach to competency, that's hard work. You know, I go in my classroom, shut the door, teach for 180 days, give a test at the end. That's what we have been accustomed to. I go in my classroom, teach for 10 or 15 days, assess, realize that this group of kids got it, this group of kids didn't. What am I going to have to do next? Now I've got to reorganize, reteach, while this group has to continue to move on, because we don't want them to stay still. So the entire concept of change is difficult. So it is, on one side, very welcomed, and on the other side, it's hard work. But teaching has always been hard work. So I don't think that teachers will run from that, but I do believe that if you don't understand and shift your mindset to a competency-based mindset, it's going to be tough. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'll just say this.
And I think most of you know, but this is Dr. Grant Rivera, Superintendent of Marietta City School.
I figured if I was holding the mic, I might as well say something. But I'll just echo this to your point. I think you asked probably one of the most important questions, and after you go through, how is it good for kids, and how is it good for educators? Well, I know what we got right now doesn't work. Ask any teacher in the city of Marietta, what they get out of a summative assessment at the end of the year, they'll tell you, is to tell you how good the district and the school is doing, not how well my kids are doing. So I respect what Scott was saying around all the complexities, and I'm not going to try to hang in his conversation. I'll tell you, what we got right now doesn't work. So how much longer are we going to endorse it? And what I'll tell you, and I previously taught in Cobb County, I previously was an administrator in Cobb County, and when I came onboard in Marietta and looked at MAP, I was extremely skeptical. And now I will tell you, with the work that's being done, as a father of a second grader, the report that I get as a parent is invaluable. As an educator, the report that I get is invaluable. So I think your question is spot on. The reality is, we believe we can do more, when it's valuable for teachers, be it NAVI or GMAP. When it's valuable, they will lean in, they will work, they will engage, families will do the same. I've never had a parent come to me and want to sit down and look at a milestones report. Not one time in 21 years in education have I looked at a summative assessment in the same way that we do with GMAP. And I think it's valuable for families, and it's valuable for educators.
Don't put that down yet.
You have a follow-up question?
I don't have a follow-up question, but that's what I was hoping to hear. I mean, the other side of this whole assessment issue is, all of us are aware that the pipeline for teachers and our future leaders in the classroom is not nearly as full as it used to be. And the work that I did since retirement until I started this, this was a key issue for us when we were working with districts around the state. And to address the assessment side of it without addressing the culture and climate side for teachers, I think, is misplaced. I think we're just, we're only examining half of the issue. Because I do think that good teachers, and even new teachers that want to be good, and veteran teachers that want to get better, they all feel a lot more comfortable when they have more information. Because shooting in the dark, and hitting in hope, and in all of that that we used to do, I agree with you, Grant, doesn't work. And this is not a shot at our state testing program either, because I think our state testing program, as we currently operate it, is as good as anybody else's. But I think there is a lot of room for improvement, and I give credit to the leadership at DOE for even going after the pilot. Because a lot, the other pilots, and Scott, you may have a better, or you probably already know this, the other pilots, the national pilots, most of them are being run out of DOE, right? They're pilots that DOE is engaging in. And Georgia's one of the few, if not the only, that actually allowed multi-district consortia to... Am I right on that?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, I think we're all kind of in the same mindset on this. But I really can, want to make sure that we address teacher effectiveness and teacher morale and all of that while we're doing this.
Scott, go ahead.
So just one quick comment on that. So, you know, I'm not just a wonky measurement expert. I used to teach high school science, biology, and chemistry. So I've been in that position. But I'll tell you a funny story. Back when I was in Wyoming, I got this call from this principal, very mad. He says, "You know, I can't believe..." Back then, we used to test, I think we used to test in mid-April, and the results came back right before they left for the summer, you know, the end of May. And he just yelled at me, and he said, "You know, how do you think we're going to use this information to know where kids are at?" I said, "I don't, but you're telling me that you're waiting all year for me to tell you how kids are doing? How come you don't know? Isn't that your job?" And so there's nothing precluding... The Milestones has a purpose, and it's designed to fit that purpose, and it passes peer review, so it does that. And I'm not here to defend Milestones. I'm just here to be clear that if we're worried about getting information to support instruction, we could do that without having to use those results for accountability through the year. There's all sorts of ways, and we've written a lot about balanced systems of assessment, to get useful information, so parents are informed, so teachers are informed, most importantly, so kids are informed on where they are. So that's all I wanted to say. It doesn't have to be all part of the same accountability assessment.
We're going to turn to... Thank you very much, Scott. We're going to turn to Mike Royal, has a question.
It's really back to Stan to your question, and I'm so glad that this is back on the agenda, because as I was looking down, there's five of us, and I think they're still here, that spent an awful lot of time on this when this was going through the legislative procedure. And I'm really glad that we're having this discussion again, because I said it then many, many times, and I just actually just, in a text, just said it again to someone else. I think this is one of the most meaningful things we can do as a state board for teachers and students, is to fulfill this promise and pledge to go down this road. But Eric, to your question, Eric, I was, I know where God's country is in Putnam. I try to spend as much time there at Lake Okony as I can. And I was in a social situation with my daughter, and she introduced me to someone, and she said, "I'm a teacher in Putnam County." And I said, "Oh, you are." I started asking a few questions. She's, you know, she's looking at me a little bit skeptical. She goes, "Why are you asking these questions? What do you do?" And I said, "Well, before I answer that, will you just please answer the questions? Because when I tell you what I do, you're going to quit talking to me." And she did, and I asked her about GMAP, NAVI. And I said, "What does it mean for you in the classroom?" She goes, "Oh, my God, I love it. It gives me information that helps..." I mean, she just went through, and she just beamed and talked about how they're implementing, and how they use it, and how she adjusts and uses it. And it was a great, and it just made me feel so proud for the work, effort, and energy that, and bullets that, taken over the years, we know we're on the course to doing something right. But it gets back to, I want to get to where we at. It's not going to be perfect. Nothing we do is going to be perfect, and we can't, and we do it so much in state government and bureaucracy and education, is we let perfect be the enemy of good. And we're not going to get, I mean, into comparability. Good gracious, I haven't said comparability probably since, Grant. We were going through the process of trying to pick the two consortia. It was, "Comparability, comparability." I mean, it just seemed like the buzzword. We're not going to get to perfect comparability, but we don't need to let perfect be the enemy of good, because the kids that we're teaching and the people doing it aren't perfect. But let's just please, if I can beg this board for anything, if I had one wish, it would be to see this through and finish this work, because it will be the best thing, I believe, for students and teachers, to be able to meet kids where they're at, particularly where we're at right now with...
Groton.
We don't know how far backwards some of them have gone, or how many haven't gone as far forward as they need to. I won't use backwards. Let's use positive. How many haven't progressed as far as they need to? And if we're not honest and use these assessments for what they are as tools, and if we shoot the messengers, we're making another huge mistake. So please, 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 I implore y'all, to continue this work, and let's keep working through it, to get teachers to be able to get that relative data. That look on that teacher's face was priceless. And then I told her I was on the State Board of Education, and she ran and said, "You're not going to tell Eric anything?" I said, "It's all good. You don't have anything to be..."
Scott, can I say something?
Helen?
Can I make a quick comment? We just heard earlier, teaching a student to read and teaching a student math, well, from a teacher also, and there's several of us that are teachers. When you have a formative assessment, when you know right on time what that student knows, and how far you can progress that student within that year, I think that's the best tool that we can have. If I'm not reading, if I don't know my alphabet in first grade, then it shows up immediately in both of our pilots. And I agree with what Stan said and Mike said, this is something we need to pursue, and we need to continue with, because our teachers are anxious to know, "Where's my student when I get them? How far can I move them towards the end of the year?" And as Stan said, Milestones has never been a formative assessment. It was there to tell us how well our students did. If I taught first grade, how well all the first grade students in the state compared to each other. So I hope we will continue. I wanted to ask, there was mentioned about the peer review, the federal peer review. There was a group that was meeting with y'all, that you checked in with DOE at one time. Do we still have that going on with DOE? And are y'all able to talk to the feds like we were before?
We meet twice a year. It's called the TAC. Our next meeting is July 7th and 8th, or something like that, July 6th, 7th. I know we're on a Wednesday, whatever that is, and you're probably the day after us or the day before us. But we meet twice. In fact, we've been going back and forth with WestEd. WestEd is the one who kind of puts it together, and we've had actually several meetings here lately in that, and just kind of going.
But twice a year seems so, with everything we've had to do right now. Seems like that needs to be beefed up a little bit, because with COVID and everything we're experiencing, the need for you to be able to tell what you're doing and share it and get some feedback, and for the feds to know what we're doing in our state. I mean, I feel like, is there a possibility of those sessions, I don't know, Richard, for those to move up, or have more than two a year?
Ms. Rice, could I speak to that?
Yes.
The Department of Education has done a great job of partnering with WestEd in order to give us technical support. So we have hours throughout the year that we can have directly with WestEd. The TAC are the outside independent experts that come in and review what we're doing. So those two meetings a year that Michael's talking about probably don't need to increase. I will say that, you know, there was some conversation about budget cuts and different kinds of things moving forward, that the DOE would have to be able to speak to. But as far as the number of hours that we got with, the technical hours that we got with WestEd, last, I'm losing my time, but I think it was last, or this school year or last school year or something, were plenty. But I think they're going to be reduced a little bit. Is that not right? Or are they going to stay this?
We're going to keep them the same.
Okay, we're going to keep them the same. So I think the number of hours with WestEd is plenty, at least from our side. I don't know about Michael.
Yeah. At first, we weren't using them very much, and here recently, we're like eating them up, big time. And we're, it seemed, we actually have a monthly meeting with WestEd now, and going through. Right, and we do the annual report. In fact, we've just been going back and forth, answering a lot of questions with that. In fact, we're starting the second annual report. We're just waiting on the template so we can start that work, which will be due in, I believe, August. But we haven't even completed all the questions. At least, I hope we've completed the last of the questions and answers, because we submitted that last bit.
All right. Thank you very much. Scott, do you have anything to add to that conversation?
No, just that I'm glad to hear that you're relying on the Technical Advisory Committee. I know the folks, some of the folks in that committee, they're very thoughtful and will give you good advice, and I think that's a good thing to do.
Excellent. Are there any other questions? Okay, I would really, really just like to thank all of you for presenting today. Scott, thank you for appearing virtually. Your comments are really, really appreciated. Thank you. All right, we're going to take a break. We're a little bit behind, about 12 minutes behind our schedule, for those who are keeping track at home. But let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. Refreshments are in the room next door. Restrooms are through there as well, and we'll be back here in about, in 10 minutes, okay? Thank you. Thank you. All right, everyone. We're going to move on to the next segment of our program. And we're going to hear from Superintendent Woods and also from Matt Jones, Chief of Staff, and from Justin, Justin Hill with regard to standards and the discussion. I know it's something first and foremost on everybody's minds as we're going through current adoptions as well as future adoptions. So I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Woods.
Again, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be with you once again. This morning, as we kind of look at the presentation on the standards review process, I think in looking at this, we're going to give you something that's more codified, written down. Really, as you look at it, is what the process has been, I think, since, you know, I've been up here. And we've had numerous standards, whether when the CTA field, health, and, you know, and you, a whole host of the things that have come, come through over the past six years with that. But I'm going to turn this over to, to Matt and Justin and kind of let y'all go through these areas and we'll answer any questions.
So if you haven't noticed, we have uploaded all the documents for today on Assembly, all the presentations you've seen so far and will for the rest of the day, and also any supplemental documents. One of those documents, and this came from a request from Chairman Sweeney, was really getting our standards review and revision process down on paper. We had lots of different documents that were kind of floating around. So what we've done is put together this document. It's on Assembly under the Standards tab. So if you have your phone or your iPad or laptop either right now or later, you can take a look at this. But what it really does is it walks you through the standards review and revision process. So for any course, for any set of standards or content area, it spells out from start to finish what the process is, is what does the DOE do as an agency? And then what's the State Board's role throughout the process? And then we added at the very bottom, there is sometimes a unique part of the process, which is when something is initiated by the governor. Think of our math and ELA standards review. So we have that line as well as when the governor initiates the process, what does that look like as well? But we just thought, since there's been a lot of discussions about the standards, this would be a really helpful document, not only for ourselves as the agency to kind of know what we're responsible for, what we're supposed to do, but also the State Board to kind of know what your responsibilities are, what information will be shared to you, what type of information, when it will be shared. So we just thought this would be really good, not only for the, the math process, which we've used up to this point, but as we look at any process. So I'm just going to walk very high level. And then if we have some opportunity for questions, we can do that. And also, of course, just like anything else, as you have time to dig into this and reflect, if you have any questions at all, you can reach out to me or the superintendent. And then Justin Hill, of course, is over our curriculum team. So the first piece of our feedback is, of course, initiating the process. And that comes from a lot of different places. It can come from school districts. Think of Gwinnett County had a good AI course and pathway they were looking at. So they approached the DOE about making that part of a state-recognized pathway and course. So that's an example of a district-initiated process. Business and industry, we have Frito-Lay in Middle Georgia. They were interested in the industrial maintenance CTA pathway, so they approached us around that. Our academic partners, we've had courses from SRAB. They've approached us with courses that they wanted us to adopt. We, of course, had the Governor's Office with ELA and math. And then the superintendent was interested in looking at science and social studies. So those are the different ways that this process can really begin. And again, it can either be a whole set of standards for a content area like ELA and math. It can be a particular course or it can be a pathway of courses. Think of our CTA courses. So once that happens, what we have said our responsibility is, is to, of course, notify the board that that process is going to start. What we're going to be looking at, either the content area or set of standards. So the second part of the process is if it is already an existing course, like we did with ELA and math, we put up a public survey to kind of see, well, here's the current course, here's the current set of standards, let us know what your thoughts and feelings on that set of standards is. And it's typically up for 30 days. We pull together a report, we share it with the board, we share it with the public. That was done with ELA and math, but we're committing to do that across the board as long as the course is already in existence. The third part is our working committees. And what's been standard practice and what we're, again, committing to is once we have identified the area, we're going to review and revise the standards. Once we've done the public feedback, we're going to reach out to board members and ask for any recommendation for subject area or subject matter experts. So these are typically teachers that teach this subject matter from your district or from across the state. And we're going to gather your recommendations for those people and make sure we, we fit them on the working committees of subject matter experts as much as possible. So with CTA courses, it's a little different because sometimes not only do we get teachers that teach that area, but we get a lot of business and industry as well. So for the CTA pathways, we're committing to making sure those working committees have 51% or more business and industry people. So we want people in the workforce that are part of those committees. And of course, you know Barbara Wall's done a lot of work in that area, but we want to kind of put pen to paper to make sure you understand what our commitment is on that end. So the fourth piece would be our academic review committee. And really, their responsibility is to look at the draft recommendations from the working committees, from the subject matter experts that are based in Georgia. And they look at the standards to make sure there's a good progression from pre-K all the way through higher ed and that those standards make sure kids are ready for college, career or life. So these are our post-secondary partners, TCSG, USG. Usually, Justin will say, "We have a lot of curriculum directors in the state." And of course, we have some subject matter experts on there as well. But they're kind of looking at the standards, big picture, the courses, big picture, to make sure there's good alignment and that kids are going to be prepared to do well post-secondary. Of course, we're also committing to during those committee meetings, State Board members being notified of the committee meetings. We are asking that the board members act as observers and it kind of explains that role on there. And the superintendent, when I'm done, I'm sure he'll kind of let you know is when he attends those meetings, the working committee meetings and the academic review committees, he's really there. He comes in, he thanks the teacher, he thanks the participants for what they're doing. He'll go in the different rooms where they're meeting, the different teams of teachers, thank them for their service, kind of check in. But he's not really there driving the meeting or driving the work of those working committees. And so that role that he plays is really what we see State Board members playing as well. So the next part of the process is once we've had the working committees create the draft recommended standards, which we get the blessing from the academic review committee that these standards will prepare students for college, career and life, then we go forward with the board and we recommend, the superintendent makes a recommendation for the board to post it for 30 days and the, the board votes on that recommendation. We post it for at least- We post it for at least 30 days. We give people a chance to respond to feedback. And then we share that analysis and that report to the board as well as we kind of make a decision based on that feedback, whether we need to pull a group in again to make some additional changes based on the feedback or we're good to go and move forward with having the board approve. If we do need to pull a group back in, we pull the group back in. Usually, typically, it's members, some members of the working committees, some members of the academic review, just depending on what we're hearing. Sometimes it can be districts as well. We pull them back in and then we share with the board what additional changes have been made from that group. And then the Superintendent comes back around with another recommendation to either post again for 30 days or we move to an adoption if we haven't heard a lot of heavy feedback. So I hope, I don't think what I said was very foreign to anyone, but I hope it's helpful to kind of get, again, pen on paper on what the process is from start to finish, what the DOE's role and expectations and what we're responsible for, what the State Board of Education's role is and what we'll do, what type of information and involvement y'all will be provided. And then kind of that unique piece with ELA and math, with the governor initiating what that looks like. And really, the only unique piece with that is the Citizens Review Committee, which the governor was pretty clear on with that process. And then the working committee of teachers being evenly appointed by the governor, the Superintendent, the DOE, and the State Board of Education. So again, I hope this was helpful just as an informational document. If you have any questions, we can answer that at the end of this portion. Or again, if you think of anything as you have a chance to dig into it, don't hesitate to reach out. I think with that, that the Superintendent's gonna give a brief update on the math standards process. And then Justin might add some additional remarks.
Again, I just want to just add a little bit to what Matt said as far as, you know, being involved in things of this nature, especially when we bring the committees together. As Matt did mention, I think when, when I have met with these groups, I, you know, I think it's very important that both myself and we as, you know, members of the board, sometimes I think the observer role is the appropriate role. Just for the mere fact that I would say this, I think that anytime we weigh in, our voice does matter. And I think trying to give these teachers the ability to at least, you know, come collectively together to put their thoughts, they are the, you know, the experts. You know, I think that, you know, myself coming into this office, what I did find out is that sometimes I may be thinking outside. Well, my staff listens to what I have to say. And all of a sudden, things may be moving and I unexpectedly didn't know things were moving. But I think that as we continue to move forward, I think, you know, we want to make sure that everybody has, you know, the place. I know when I come and, and, you know, present it to you, then, you know, you know, this is where we definitely want to have your feedback from the board. And I think that since I've been on, I, you know, feel very comfortable to say that, you know, that I and the department, we've always listened to that. We've made changes. I think trying to give you, you know, enough time to look at standards, to share with, you know, members that you know of out in the field, I think that's very appropriate. I think about the health standards. I mean, that was a process in which many of your comments, again, I mean, it was delayed, you know, several times. As you met and you heard things, then, you know, we responded to that. And, and so I think those are the appropriate times that, you know, that we become engaged. As I've shared with people, I said, I never am on a timetable to adopt something, okay? I think we want to make sure whatever standards we have, we get it right. And I think that's very important, you know, with the process that is being done. When we look at math, I think that, you know, where we are now at the public review, I would say that we are beginning to the process of looking at the review comments. I do anticipate that we will probably need to put a hold on some of the things. And again, am I surprised by that? No. I think that one of the things as I looked at and, and I know I shared with Matt, you know, for myself, two things I've always been concerned about, are we still trying to cover too much during the course of the year? And I would say, yeah, I mean, when I look at it, I'd say, yeah, I'm not surprised by that. I think, you know, is it age-appropriate? You know, is it developmental-appropriate? And I think, yeah, that's something we continue to have to look at to get that right. You know, we have been approached by, in fact, even down at Bootstrap, you know, several superintendents came up to me and expressed, you know, some concerns that they were hearing. I said, well, that's what I wanted to hear. I think that, you know, for myself, and I think it's showing that the process does work, you know. I know, Ms. Rice, you've got some information that, you know, you wanted to share from what you've heard. And I think collectively, as we took at that, you know, we're gonna continue to take our, our comments, but we've received enough that I think that I feel very comfortable that, you know, it's probably good and we'll go ahead and start taking a pause and looking at some things. But as I shared, I think for myself, for me to interject and say that, yes, this is what I firmly believe and think of, but I think it's important for people in the field that they actually recognize that this is a concern. And I think that, you know, it's, you know, when you're, you're in there and you're the one baking the cake, then, you know, it's gonna always look pretty good. It's always gonna taste pretty good. But I think once you get out, and that's what I, you know, again, when you put everything side by side, I'd said, a lot of great, you know, changes have been made, but I just still didn't feel that we were quite where we needed to be. There were things that still needed to look, look at. I think the language is good as we look at that. There are some things with math, I mean, to be honest, math is math. Kids need to know how to count from one to 100, okay? There's not many different ways we can say, my child will count one to 100. Boy, I need to add, I need to multiply, I need to divide. And, and it is trying to look at, at everything. I think we look at high school, there, you know, have been some things. And, and I think when you look at high school, we obviously have to work with other partners. We have to work with USA or USG. I mean, what are they gonna accept, what are they not gonna accept? We gotta work with TSG. What are they gonna accept, what are they not gonna accept? And so I think there are some things that, that even, you know, talking with teachers, there were, you know, significant changes in those areas of, why are we doing this? Why, why are we seeing geometry somewhere in, in algebra? You know, why are we seeing statistics somewhere, you know, where it's never been? And, and I think that, you know, when we've, we've looked at, we've cut, we've added, but, you know, that's from, again, my understanding from USG, there's a little bit of a mindset and a change. But at the end of the day, is that was best for our kids? I think we'll, you know, kind of get there. So that's kind of where we are with math. You know, I said, I'm pleased at what I saw because it's, I mean, it confirmed what I thought I was seeing. But I think necessarily, come for me, that's, that's not a big thing. I mean, you know, to be honest, they're gonna look at a social studies person and say, what do you know? And, and I'm pretty good up to math, up to a certain level. But again, I can count, you know, standards, I can count what I would say are elements. Again, the things listed under, the learning progressions underneath there. So, you know, that's where we're gonna go, you know, from here. I think it, you know, continues to be a good process with that. You know, we want to make sure everyone feels welcome in the process at the very beginning. As I said, we typically, we all get to select people who represent, you know, our thoughts on, you know, as far as looking at, you know, who are teachers, who are business people, or people that are appropriate, you know, to the, you know, initial committees. And even afterwards, I think that, you know, there were things that were brought to me when we talked about New and Old Testament. It's like, well, could, could these people be added too? And that was one of the things we said, okay, this is definitely, you know, individuals who, who are more of an expert in Greek and Hebrew than, than I am. And I think trying to add that. So I think we always continue to be flexible as we move forward and listen to everyone, you know, in that. As I said, I do hope to look at, we continue to give you a little more time on the front end to look at standards, to get feedback from, from those out in the field. And I think that would be beneficial as we continue to move forward and just so that we can, you know, have a dialogue and, and make sure that when, when they are presented to you, that we're ready to move forward. But if we do need to make, you know, corrections or slow down and listen, you know, I, again, I think that, at least I hope that you've seen that I've been, you know, more than amicable to that. Because I hope we get to the point where, you know, standards reviewed, we do not need to be looking at these every three, four, five years. It need, I mean, it takes about a good three years just to get, you know, understanding underneath your belt as a teacher of what's being asked of you, looking at the PL and, and training that comes with that. You know, personally, when I was in the classroom, we used to do this about once every seven years. And that was a pretty good time period for us to make sure we did that. And it also means that when we do look at things, we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel all over. That's, that's very critical as well. You know, with, with teachers, just understand if it works, you know, we don't necessarily have to change everything to make it. Again, I go back to the thing, looking at math. I mean, math is pretty, pretty simple when you look at it. I think we've been doing it for several thousands of years. And, you know, I don't know if you're gonna improve upon the numeric system as it stands right now. So if there are any questions or any thoughts, we're, we'll be glad to entertain. Justin's over here, he can probably give you more information on, on the process, what has taken place. But, you know, please look at this document and we'll continue to move forward.
Helen, Helen's winding up, so.
I'm afraid to say anything, but you turned me off. But Richard, let me say this to you, and I'm sure Lisa feels the same way because we were on that call. The, the reason that we add some things or mention things is that our constituents have called us and, and ask about those things. It's not us going out. It's not us trying to buy, borrow a problem. It's us hearing about it and feeling like that we want to collaborate with the DOE to be a part with you, to let you know what's going on. It's not that we want to go to, thank you for including us in the meetings. That's because we can be ambassadors for the DOE when we hear what's going on. We can't serve you well in our districts unless we understand what, what we're doing. So on the phone calls with the Hebrew, thank you. On the phone calls with the standards, because we were getting, thank you for that. And you did extend it for an extra week, you said the math, because of, people were having spring breaks and Bootstrap was coming in and, and our, our superintendents were concerned about the funding issues with cares. I mean, there was so much going on to really sit down and look at some things. It was, it was difficult. So I do want to say thank you for that. And Matt, on the timelines and things, if we're there, if we're invited, like I said, we're only there to be, to collaborate and work. Because if we don't know when people ask us, then we can't, can't be an ambassador for the DOE. I will tell you that at Bootstrap, and I'm not the only one, I'm probably some others, a lot of superintendents said, though, what you said, there needed to be a pause. It was a lot to try to deal with right now. So I won't elaborate on that, but I will say, I think the standards are good. I think we're moving forward in the right way, but I think we need to move together in a timeline, on a, a time that's a little bit paced a little differently so our teachers and our superintendents aren't overwhelmed because they're dealing with the COVID and the loss of learning in the classroom right now, too.
Well, again, the thing as far as the process, I could, it's, I mean, I always welcome review and thoughts with that. And I think that's to anyone on the board. Again, for, you know, for some, you know, maybe more involved than others and when it comes to standards. But again, I think that I go back, I don't, can't think of any standards in which, if, if I've been approached by anyone on the board or had any thoughts that we've, we've turned anyone down. I said, and that's not a, a criticism, you know, to anyone. I think that, again, when, when the standards are presented to you, that's where we want to have the feedback. I mean, that's, that's time we, we have to listen. I mean, I, I typically, when, when I get them, I mean, it's at a finished product or whatever, and then, you know, I'll have questions and stuff. And so I'll go back to Justin and the teachers and say, hey, because I mean, if I don't necessarily feel comfortable, then I'm not gonna move them forward. And I think that, you know, I mean, this is why we have checks and balances. I think when, when they're presented to you as, as a board, I mean, you ultimately adopt them, you vote. And, you know, I think it is trying to be very, you know, cognizant of that. I mean, that's a big, that's a big vote. Because, you know, as I've shared with many people, I said, the decisions we make up in Atlanta, we don't necessarily have to live with day in and day out. But those teachers and those kids, yeah, that's something that, that affects their life and/or livelihood, to be honest. And so I think that, you know, we're just, just, again, just trying to look at that. I mean, we're, we're involved with it. Again, I mean, as, as we have new standards, you know, you're welcome to recommend people. You know people out there. I mean, many of you are in business and industry. So you have, you know, contacts that, that definitely I don't have. And, and you know experts across the field and I think that is trying to pull us together. And, you know, and I think that as we continue to move forward, it is just being, you know, mindful. I think, again, for us, and this is just, and I include myself in this, that sometimes we do have to be, be careful what we say because our voice does have an impact and it may unintentionally drive or steer things and, and kind of close down some of the collaboration. I, I think that as, you know, as standards, as I've been to, you know, places, I mean, as Matt mentioned, usually I come in, I say hello, just, you know, thank you for the job because it's a big underlifting for anyone that is a part of that process. And I don't care what standards you go into, it is, it is, you know, a big process. And, you know, and to give them the intellectual freedom to make decisions that, you know, not necessarily won't be, you know, biased or driven. Because as I shared, I know that if I have my voice and I lend it in, whether I think it or not, it's gonna have an impact on the way people think. And again, I just say that because of what I've experienced just within a department, that I have found out that somehow the title of superintendent, you know, it can push and move people and it may not be, you know, intentional on that. But, you know, that being said, I think I want us all to look at how do we improve the process because your thoughts, when you bring it out to, to the field, is very important. I mean, to hear from your constituents and what that looks like or your thoughts about, you know, what should or should not be in there. I, I think, again, you have to be comfortable because you're voting for something. And I don't think any of us, we don't, you know, compromise our principles, we don't compromise our thoughts. We all have different experiences that we bring in. You know, we've all been to school, but I guarantee you, school looks a lot different, you know, today than, than when I was in school. There was nothing necessarily smart on our boards. It was basically chalk and, and we didn't have computers and we didn't have phones and we didn't have internet and all these things. And, and so, you know, and, and we didn't have really the accountability that we, we have today. So a lot of things look different. But, you know, so far, I would say, I think this is a good process. It's good, something that, you know, I hope all of you will look at and, you know, take to heart what's there. But I feel that it, it has been what, what we've seen. And there's never no intent to, you know, to keep, to keep anybody out or keep anybody thoughts out. But, you know, I think it just allows us to say, okay, this is the process we need to follow and let's let the process unfold. And as I said, and I'll just, you know, share this again, I think with math, understanding what I thought I was seeing when I looked at the standards, but it's just one voice in my head, but I think now it's out there, you know, to the people of Georgia. I think parents see one thing. A lot of them were very concerned about how, how can my child calculate math versus what I'm learning? But just, you know, that was a, a very valid concern. And I think with the practitioners, the teachers, are we trying to cover too much? And can we adequately, again, I think our intent is, we want our kids to learn, okay? Not just cover and move on, but it is important that we have, you know, I think the quality versus quantity issue. But now we've got to make a decision of what do you cut out? And, and that's a big lift. And that means just don't move it to somebody's grade. I'll be honest, I think fourth grade, they felt like they were the, the middle child of third and fifth because what third didn't want to cover, they pushed up, and what fifth didn't want to cover, they pushed down. So, you know, it was like, well, gee, we're covering a whole lot more than we used to. And so I think it is, you know, again, trying to look at things and we'll continue to move forward. But that's kind of where we are with math standards and the intent right now that probably we'll have to have, you know, somewhat of a pause.
Richard, I think there's a few more questions here. I'm gonna turn to, I'm gonna turn to Dr. Dejor, not first. Lisa, I think you, you may have some questions. I know Martha does as well and that too.
This is, and you were kind of referencing there just before we stopped you, or you stopped. I think all of us at Bootstrap last week that were there heard from superintendents and curriculum directors the same thing you heard. And I, and I don't know if the, if the survey window reflects this. But, and I was certainly, I've been involved, I've been involved with math curriculum adoption for 26 years and 25 years. And there will always be teachers and practitioners that won't like where we move something. You know, a concept or a skill. And that's, that's a diff, you're not, I don't think we're ever gonna make everybody happy with where we put certain content. And I, as I was trying to explain to someone last week who's not a educator, that the developmentally appropriate sometimes collides with the, what we need to know before they graduate. And where that typically, you have a crash, a head-on collision, is somewhere between fourth and seventh grade. And, and they do. I mean, they're, those teachers are under a lot of pressure. And I think it's really gonna be hard to make everybody happy with where certain content is. But the overarching. to be hard to make everybody happy with where certain content is. But the overarching issue of the amount of content is what I'm hearing the most about, that, and I know we don't get involved with individual scheduling models for local school systems, and I certainly hope we never get involved with individual scheduling models for school districts.
Yeah, please let room attire before that, so.
Yeah. But schools' districts that are on four-by-four block have less time to cover content. And we put a lot of pressure on teachers to, particularly in math classrooms, to really adapt to that instructional scheduling model. But back to the original, I guess the point I'd like to make, if it does, if the feedback is overwhelming that we have too much, we're trying to cover too much, and that is the one central concern that I've heard from elementary, middle, high, college, teachers that have done all of those things, credit recovery, doesn't matter. Are we going to be able to reconcile that? And if the answer is, "We don't know yet," I'm okay with that, but for us to receive that amount of input from the field and not do anything is, you know, I learned a long time ago, if you don't want to know what people think, don't ask them. Because if you do ask people what they think and then ignore it, we're putting ourselves in a lot of trouble. So, do we have a process, and I don't think it needs to go back to square one, but is there a process that we can avail ourselves of to get less content K-12, if that ends up being the number-one concern?
Well, I think right now, I mean, for the people we've listened to, and I think that, I mean, to your point, you know, if you don't want a question that, you know, asked, well, we're asking those people, I said, "Okay, you brought this to our attention." Again, I'm a social studies person, okay? But I'm just saying that with the amount of content-
We're all educators, and we're all educated people, and I quit saying I'm not a math person, because we're all math people. I mean, we're all math, we all use math every day. Now, do I have a math degree? No, I don't. But we all use, and we all use history and social studies every day. We're all educated people. Our job is to, I mean, our task as a group here is to make sure we put the best curriculum possible in sort of our, and I think we all agree on that. All right, I'm back to my original question, do we have a process for narrowing the scope or the amount of content?
Yes, we're bringing some of these folks together that have been talking about this, reaching out some of the superintendents who have been a part of this and that brought this to our attention. I think trying to bring in some of their curriculum people as well, again, to make sure that what we have. And I think depending where that is, we may have to involve some other people. If it's high school, then as I shared, what is USG looking for? What is TSG looking for? I mean, that's not just a sole decision upon us, because now we're graduating people. I think that, you know, in the future, as we look at this, I mean, I think for us, it is also looking at, what are the courses that we are offering our young people? That looks a little bit different, too. But as I shared, I know USG is kind of changing some of their thought about math and what that looks like, and so I think that is trying to, I mean, Algebra II, I'll give you the example, is kind of the, has the biggest bullseye on it. In my talk with some folks in that area, I would say, "I do not recognize this as traditional Algebra II at all." And, okay, that's going to require some talk with that, with our others, but yeah, we'll be bringing that in, and that's where we've already started the process now that we've heard. But now, help us and give us some specifics on that, and we'll be pulling those people in. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa, did you have a question?
We had talked about the crosswalk from the former standards and see how everything aligns with the new standards. Do you have a way for us to get access to that so that we can see how different elements in the standards are moved from one place to another, or if they are totally eliminated or combined or whatever?
Well, I mean, easily just pulling both the new standards or the proposed recommended standards and the old standards, I mean, that can be done simple enough. But I would say that even in the current form, and I think that, of course, I think that Dr. Timelake left, there's enough significant change that we would have to change the milestones. So, there's enough within that to show that, okay, the standards have changed, obviously a good bit. You would find, especially in the area of language, that it could, but I mean, we can, again, I think whether you want to, I mean, I guess, Justin, we could put something together where you have first-grade standards, A and B side by side, but it is easily as, you know, if you want to just pull it together. But what you will find is that there is a lot of significant change in that, you know, with the standards, definitely in the area of language. I don't know, Matt or Justin, if y'all want to add anything to that?
Well, the biggest challenge is, they went through all the standards and totally rewrote, because not only just based on looking at concepts and skills in the standard, but remember, one of the biggest pieces of feedback we got was assessable language. So, you might have the same concept and skill transfer from one set of standards to the next, but that means they rewrote the language of the standard. So, if we did a redline version, the whole thing would be redlined, because you wouldn't just be looking at concepts and skills going from one grade to the next, it would show the whole standard being rewritten, because they really looked at every standard, in particular in that K-5 area, because that's where we heard the most amount of feedback, that parents didn't understand what the standards meant. And we saw a lot of academic language being used in that K-5 area. So, again, if we did a redline version for you, the whole thing would be redlined. And that doesn't necessarily mean all the standards were thrown out, but it does mean all the standards were reviewed and completely rewritten, and things were moved from grade to grade, and to the superintendent's point, into stands. That's a really challenging thing, when you get teachers in the room and you ask them, "Do we have too many standards?" They're all going to say, "Yes." When you start deciding where concepts and skills go, when the third-grade groups say, "Well, it doesn't need to be in third grade," and they try to give it to fourth grade, and fourth grade says, "Well, you already have too many," where does that go? So, I think it's not an impossible lift, but that's going to be a hard discussion to have, because everybody likes everything. And it's really hard to start drilling down to say, "What are the essential things kids need to know?" Because the fact of the matter is, whether it's milestones or NAVI or GMAP, these set of standards, we're not measuring whether they were exposed to them or they explored them, we measure whether they mastered them. And I think that's what gives teachers heart palpitations, is when they look at everything that a kid has to learn, and they're like, "They had to master all these things." And I heard somebody say, "180 days in a school year," it's really not even that many by the time you take in how many days we use for testing and for all these other things, they're probably getting more around 150, 160 days. Can you not only cover that, but to the superintendent's point, can kids learn that in the course of that time? So, I think that's the biggest heartburn. I think teachers have a hard time doing it, because they're in the weeds, they're the practitioners. To the superintendent's point, I think what we're going to need is some curriculum directors that see the high-level view from K to 12, what kids need to learn, what's the essential pieces to start having those conversations on what should be kept and what shouldn't be kept. I'll say, the good news is, we didn't hear, "This is awful, everything needs to be thrown out." They thought the standards were good, they thought the instructional supports were good, they just thought there were too many of them. So, we got to focus on the too many. And they didn't necessarily, we didn't receive criticism on the rollout, because remember, we're going to spend all of next year, these aren't hitting our classrooms in August, we're spending all the next school year with training, for updating the assessments, this is not going to hit our classrooms till the year after. So, we'll have the pandemic well behind us by then, and we'll have plenty of time to get teachers trained to where they need to be, so.
Well, I did, and I don't know if I've still got the floor or not, but I did hear a lot of positive comment about the improved clarity of the standards, that if they're easier for parents and teachers to, so, you know, that's a great thing, I think, in my opinion.
I've got a recommendation here, is that we have a speaker who's on a tight schedule, Dr. Alvin Woolbanks is going to be here, but we do have a full hour for lunch, and we're going to be here in this room. So, if we could, I would like to go ahead and have Chris Ragsdale, who's going to come in here as well, who's the superintendent for Cobb County Schools, and then Alvin speak. And then, if we could, Richard and Matt and Justin, if we could continue the dialogue perhaps a little bit through lunch, if that'll work for everybody, is that fine?
That's great, that's one.
Okay, all right. Excuse me for just- By the way, this is my dear friend, John Stafford. John Stafford is the gentleman who's put all this together. I'd like to give him and his team a round of applause. I got to know John very, very well during my term here on the Cobb County Board of Education, and he does a remarkable job hosting and putting together special events for Cobb County, has just done a remarkable job. It's with, my great honor to introduce a close, personal friend, and somebody that I had the distinct pleasure of working with for a very, very long time with Cobb County School District, and that is my friend, Chris Ragsdale, who's the superintendent of Cobb County School District, the largest, one of the second-largest school system in the state of Georgia. I believe it's the 24th-largest system in the country, and as I mentioned, proudly, incredible as far as academic performance, incredible facilities like the one that you're in today, the Cobb Innovation and Technology Academy. And again, as I mentioned before, one of the largest systems in the entire country, to be debt-free, and also enjoy a AAA credit rating. Without further ado, please welcome my friend, Chris Ragsdale.
Thanks, everybody. So, it's always interesting when you're introducing someone, and normally, you know, you get a script and things, and I know that people think, and we are. Mr. Woolbanks and I are very close friends, we've had a lot of discussions across the years, but when I looked through the script and it said, "Alvin," my granddaddy and grandmother would come up out to grave and get me if I called him by his first name. So, anyway, Mr. Woolbanks, a master educator, a visionary leader, a hard worker, a proven mentor, a person of integrity, and a stalwart advocate of public education. All of these are phrases that have been used to describe Mr. Woolbanks. Today, we will add yet another distinguished title to that, and that is distinguished servant. Coming from humble beginnings in Jackson County, Georgia, Mr. Woolbanks has displayed a calm, quiet, and steady demeanor that has served him well over the years. When he entered the University of Georgia, he chose education as a major, not knowing that the education of young people would become his life's work. His first teaching job was at Tucker High School, where he served as an industrial arts teacher. He was characterized as a teacher who didn't rely on guesswork. He went into the class knowing his objective and how he was going to achieve it. That remained true as Mr. Woolbanks moved from the classroom to school administration as an assistant principal at Tucker High School. I got to say, I can't see Mr. Woolbanks as assistant principal. I just, I just can't, I can't see that. That singular focus remained as he became a leader at the Georgia Department of Education, and then took the position that would bring him to Gwinnett County. In the early 80s, Mr. Woolbanks was first introduced to Gwinnett County Public Schools when then-Superintendent Alton Cruz called him to ask if he would help build and lead a technical college in Gwinnett. Mr. Woolbanks accepted that call to become the president of Gwinnett Technical College, and knowing him, I'm sure he had a well-laid-out plan for how he and the Gwinnett Tech staff would make a difference in preparing the workforce for a growing Gwinnett County. However, I doubt in his plans he could foresee the transition that would take place when he received a phone call at his home one night after dinner, asking him if he would become the leader of Georgia's largest school district. He answered the call in more ways than one. Since that night in 1996, he has served as CEO and superintendent of Gwinnett County Public Schools. As superintendent, Mr. Woolbanks has been touted by three Georgia governors and two United States Secretaries of Education to help craft significant education reform legislation at the state and federal levels. He served for many years as chairman of the Board of Trustees for the Teachers Retirement System of Georgia. In 2017, Governor Nathan Deal appointed Mr. Woolbanks to chair the Joint Study Committee charged with establishing a statewide school leadership academy for Georgia. He has served as a leader in organizations and advocate for public education at the state and national levels, including the Georgia Education Coalition and the National Large Countywide and Suburban District Consortium. In all of these roles, he humbly served, sharing his wisdom and more importantly, serving as a mentor and guide on the side to leaders across Georgia and the nation. Throughout his career, Mr. Woolbanks has won numerous honors for his professional accomplishments and civic contributions, including being named 2005 Georgia Superintendent of the Year and one of four finalists for the national title. He has been honored with the University of Georgia College of Education's Lifetime Achievement Award. The Professional Association of Georgia Educators named him as its 2016 honoree, and he was celebrated with its "page-turning" event that recognizes outstanding business and civic leaders for their contribution to public education in Georgia. In 2019, Mr. Woolbanks was honored with the Georgia Association for Career and Technical Education's first Lifetime Achievement Award, and that award bears his name moving forward. While these individual awards are impressive, if you were to ask Mr. Woolbanks about his most meaningful recognitions, he would speak of the ones that have honored the collective work of the Gwinnett team, not to be confused with the Cobb One Team, but just throwing that out there. The team has benefited GCPS students. These accolades include the district's selection as a three-time finalist and two-time winner of the Broad Prize for Urban Education, one of the country's most prestigious honors for school districts. The district has been honored at the national level for closing gaps in achievement, increasing access to rigorous study, and being a great place for teachers. And in 2018, Mr. Woolbanks and the Gwinnett County Board of Education received the state's first-ever Governance Team of the Year Award from the Georgia School Board's Association. Stability, success, and a never-ending focus on students have been the hallmarks of Mr. Woolbanks's career. For more than 25 years, he has led Gwinnett County Public Schools as a superintendent, a job he calls one of the most rewarding in his 56-plus years as an educator. I was going to insert a comment about my age and that, but I'm not going to, because he'll get me. Mr. Woolbanks, thank you for your dedication to public education and the honor you have brought to our profession. You've been a friend to me personally, and you have been an example of what a superintendent should be. You've actually changed lives across the country, the state, and actually here in Cobb County. And just a personal, kind of, a couple of issues that when I first became interim superintendent, we have a meeting that we call the Large Systems Superintendent's Meeting, and generally, we bring the board chairs, many of you have been there in the room, so you know what I'm talking about. And I had the privilege of watching Mr. Woolbanks, and how he came to a point to stand up for what needed to be stood up for, but also in the professional demeanor that he brought. And I can't say enough about the friendship, all of the calls that he and I have shared. But going back to prior to being superintendent, you know, we have, used to, the biggest thing that we had to do was call for inclement weather, right? And so, when I was on executive cabinet in Cobb, you know, we would say, "Well, you know, Fulton's going to do this, and we think, you know, Cherokee's going to do this." Well, unknowingly, I said, "Well, what's Gwinnett going to do? I mean, they're the top, we're the second-largest." And the superintendent looked at me and said, "Mr. Woolbanks will never close schools, he will always keep school open." So, we have had certainly a challenging time during a pandemic. I think that Mr. Woolbanks and I shared a few calls at the beginning of this crazy time, and I don't think anybody could have understood what was coming. But having Mr. Woolbanks as a mentor, I know for all, even at the metro recent meetings, I know we depended on him a lot for his advice, and that steadfastness that is brought about by nothing more than experience. So, it is truly my privilege to introduce my friend, Mr. Woolbanks. So it is truly my privilege to introduce my friend, Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you. I would be very remiss if I did not say that whatever he talked about really is due credit to the people that worked for me. I've had a, a real focus on hiring people that is smarter than me. And most people, including this gentleman over here, would say, well, that's not too hard, Alvin. Most people smarter than you. But truly, I, I always try to do that because they're the people that really make the organization and allow you to get done what you need to get done. I took from the information that I got from you today that rather than a rip-roaring just speech, you wanted me to talk about some specific things as it relates to something that we would probably like to not have to talk about, and that is the pandemic. But talk about the post-pandemic, moving forward, what do we do? And the thing that really, nobody really knows, we all are guessing, projecting, trying to find out what others are saying. I did find a study from a month or so ago that was done in the state of Ohio. And we actually have more in common with the state of Ohio than most people in Georgia would want to admit. We used to have a lot in common with the state of Wisconsin, about the same size, same population, blah, blah, blah. But state of Ohio study, and it, it appeared to me, not that I'm an expert on reviewing research and studies, but it said to me that they probably have as good of handle on it as anybody because they, they did get the right people looking at it. And they predict that at the end of the school year, which is coming up pretty quickly, that the students that are now in school, as a composite number, are probably gonna be about 70% of where they ordinarily would be. I sort of agree with that. I, I think that's probably, probably correct. Now, that's the top students. That's the students that, that do well. So what they didn't give a good number on, there was no metrics on, what's happened to the students that have a difficult time on a sunny day when they're in school? Or if it happens to be a digital learning session, it's because of reasons other than the pandemic. And we know that a lot of them, at least in Gwinnett, and I'm sure having some conversations with other superintendents, including your superintendent, not every student did a lot after they signed in. And in all fairness to a lot of those homes, when they signed in, they were the only person at home. So therefore, they did not have any supervision or whatever during the day. So my point there is that I think this, whatever this number will be for those students that very diverse, live in poverty, whatever that number will be, will not be good. And just extrapolating some of the stuff, it could be 40, 50% at the most for those students. So I think we're gonna have to really do some things that address this. And I would like to say the post, the post-pandemic future maybe is gonna be dependent upon who we've depended upon during the pandemic. It's gonna be dependent upon, first of all, our teachers. I was told during the height of the school year that a lot of our teachers won't be coming back. We actually have more, more retention this year. Now, we still have a month to go, okay? So a lot of things can happen in a month. But based on the form that they tell us, that they intend to come back next year, I believe they did that in March, they actually moved that date. It used to be March 15th, you had to tell, otherwise, you know, we'd start looking at somebody. But we, on a percentage basis, we have more teachers this year that indicate they're coming back next year than we had the previous four years. So it did not do anything for the retention of staff. And I think that probably is the case statewide. I, I don't know of any specific details, but, and that speaks to the commitment, I think, of the teachers in this state. And I, I just know that in, in my county, we try to always make sure that they know we love them, we appreciate them, and as we've had a little bit of money to provide extra, and I think Superintendent Wood and, and you and the governor have come together, the $1,000 sends to them, that not only do we appreciate them, but we love them. Some of you might remember Mike Mescon, Professor of Georgia State. He used to have a favorite saying that there's no better way to say I love you than money. So I think teachers prove that is the case. So what are we gonna do about then, that learning loss? And, and I'm not saying that it's accurate, and I don't wanna put a lot of pressure on the study that Ohio did, but, but I think the metrics that they use is probably pretty accurate. We have a few students, I know that they can, virtual learning is great for them. As a matter of fact, personally, I sort of divide that up. About 30% of the students can do well with digital learning. Another 30% can do okay. You have about 30% that are just lost. They, that's just not their forte. So what are we gonna do about that, and what are the recommendations to do about that? Probably every school district that I know, and I know we are, we're going to have what we're referring to as a robust summer school program. But we're not using the words summer school. We're using opportunity for enrichment and enhancement and enrichment. And, you know, hoping that generates some things in people. As you know, summer school's not required. And as you know, a lot of people don't have way to and from summer school. However, we are gonna provide transportation. But we also know that just because you provide transportation, they won't get up early and get on the bus. So as we speak, our teachers, particularly in the elementary grades, are trying to work with the families of the students who really need to be in the summer in, in enrichment program. And in doing that, we've asked our teachers to not just teach summer school. Look at what they're going to need at the next level. We call our curriculum the AKS, Academic Knowledge and Skills. So look in there at those standards that really students need to know as they start the next level. And teach those. Focus your efforts and your time on, on doing that. We just don't want you to teach if they, they're in the fifth grade or fourth grade, don't just teach the standard curriculum. Do the things that really will give them a good start because these students need a good start next year. Now, a couple of other things that we know that we're going to do. We know that the isolation that the pandemic has brought about lingers. And sometimes I think we may talk ourselves into more of that than there is, but I do think there, there is, there is some. Particularly with students that thrive on, you know, interactions, and most students do. You all know that. I assume most of you have had children, I have experiences with them, and you're on the school board, and you've probably been in schools. And by the way, let me thank you for your service on the Georgia School Board. And I know Superintendent Wood and other people in the state really appreciate that. I know y'all get a huge paycheck, but, you know, you probably get no phone calls, but thank you for doing that. And it, it, it does make a difference because you all want to sort of set the, the policy and the standards that the districts look to and follow. So as we then talk about the learning loss and, and what are some of the solutions or recommendations, I don't know that I have many solutions. Other than what it, most any issue or any problem, it takes somebody looking at it, studying it, some, doing something different? Just doing the same's not gonna do, be what we need to do. We, I think we've gotta do some things different. And we're gonna begin doing that, and I'm sure all over the state. As a matter of fact, we've already started doing some things different. Also, there's been some terms and acronyms that has come to the forefront, SEL, Social Emotional Learning. And that has generated, and Superintendent Woods, I don't know how it works up at state level, but it's generated into positions for us. And I, I don't think it's a position, I think it's an attitude and how you go about doing what you're supposed to do. Social emotional learning, folks, is nothing more than really making sure that if you all are a class and I'm the teacher, that I speak to you, I make a connection with you, I try to find out the things that you like, try to identify with you in some of the things that you do, and try to tie that into what's going on in the classroom. Now, there are some students that were sort of on the borderline of having some emotional, maybe even some slight mental issues that we do need some specialists for. We do need some professional people to deal with that. But I don't think the rank-and-file student that's just been out of school since, and, and this is a thing that's hard for us to believe sometimes, but there are students. As a matter of fact, there are some teachers across the state that haven't been back in school since March the 12th, that's the Friday that the last day to attend. Now, think about that. That's been over a year. And we have a few districts, and I, I don't need to get into that, I have enough to do with my own district. But, you know, I, I really fear for the students that have been out of school most of the year or almost all of the year. I think there's some real challenges that are gonna be brought forth with that. And I don't think it's gonna be resolved during summer school. As a matter of fact, Mr. Superintendent, I think it's gonna be two or three years before we sort of get beyond some of that with many, many of our students. But we do need to make sure that we're addressing those issues. Now, a lot of these can be addressed, as I said, by the teacher, just in the normal duties of teaching. Others can be addressed by the counselors. And I think in some cases, we may, we may have to look at having some specialists. I know we're gonna try to do that on a temporary basis and maybe do that through a partnership with companies that, that have this, rather than having them full-time and, and us having to retain them. As you know, if you ever get hired by a school district, it's sort of hard to get rid of you if you don't, if we don't need you. So we're, we're, we're looking at that because we hope the pandemic is, certainly, we hope that next year will be a very different year than this year. And I realize hope's not always a strategy. By the way, will somebody tell me when I need to sit down from this? I mean, pardon? This is written, and I just quit, I'll just raise your hand and I can stop, just like that.
We love hearing from you, Alvin. Keep going.
Okay. So the future outlook of expectations for face-to-face and hybrid learning. Now, somebody put these things, things down, I don't know who it was for me to address, and I assume they may have run it by you, but if not, I hope you're enjoying what I'm talking about, or at least you think a little bit about it. First of all, face-to-face instructions is the best way to educate kids, most kids. Digital or hybrid learning, as a lot of people refer to it with, a lot of kids can be okay with that. The Georgia Virtual Academy does that, a lot of other, the Khan Academy. We've had a online school for many years, I think you all have some same thing. And, you know, a lot of kids can deal with that and do well. But the majority of the kids learn best face-to-face. And that's the thing that I think has been a challenge this year. And that's why, as Chris, he was a little bit of evangelistical when I said I never closed school. I've actually closed school occasionally, but kids need to be in school. And quite frankly, if we do the things, I, I heard something yesterday, a day before yesterday, from CDC. I didn't have much else to do. I actually was sitting, sitting in the waiting room, my wife's been in the hospital, so I spent about four hours there Saturday afternoon. And what is she gonna do? She don't wanna talk with me for four hours. But I was thinking about some of this stuff. And I had a, a little earplug in and listening to radio. And they were saying that most of the spread of coronavirus is not, was not by touching surfaces. Just think of all the gallons of sanitizer we've used to clean surfaces. And we know when President Trump talked with the Washington Post editor, said that, he told him, said, this is gonna be big. I'll think of his name in a minute. He said, this is airborne. And it is. You don't really get it, or there's not, or they say there's not been a lot of transmission that goes from this to this. I guess if you got down and licked it, maybe it would be. Or if you're inclined to do other things when you do it. But here's the, here's the thing that I think we've got to do. And whether it's inclement weather or whether it's the conditions that are existing now, if we can have school, we ought to have school. If we can't, then we can't. Call it off. But every time you call it off, and I can assure you, Gwinnett is not the only district, you put, and, and we're not in the babysitting business, shouldn't be, don't plan to be, but it's reality. When you call school off, there are a lot of kids that have no place to go but home and nobody to be there but them. And that's not a good situation. Now, it's no reason for us to have school and risk lives, I understand that, but that's a reality that when you do that. What we wanna do is, we wanna try to make sure that when we have school, let's make sure that every child is challenged, every child. We also wanna make sure that, you know, our teaching corps, we've had a lot of, you know, during the pandemic, and Chris, I know you've had some of these same decisions, it got to be about 50/50, folks. No matter what decision you made, about 50% of people would like it, but what was the other 50% gonna be? They didn't like it. And so to this day, we have about, I think, 55% in school and 45% still virtual. Now, those numbers have dropped, swapped a little bit lately, but that's the, what we base the teaching assignments and things for this semester. So I think the effectiveness of online learning, what we've, what we've learned... So I think the effectiveness of online learning, what we've, what we've learned is, number one, we've learned a lot about how to do it. Most of our professional development for online learning, and oddly enough, we were about to have some professional learning days the week, the first week of the pandemic on online learning, because we had put three or four digital learning days in our calendar, apart from the pandemic. And we, we realized that teaching virtually is very different than teaching face-to-face. So as we looked at that, we, our people that have expertise in that area, they really got down doing some things that they thought we should do. When the pandemic started, we realized that after knowing that the last nine weeks of school was probably going to be that way, we got to realizing that we need to go back and probably modify some of that. And then when we realized it was going to continue into the next year, we spent a lot of time in the summer, really making sure that our teachers really knew some of the strategies and techniques that make online learning very useful and how you can go about organizing the content. And we have all kinds of technology, all programs, but there has to be somebody that can look at and see what can students really navigate through to really be successful during that time. I will say that the only thing I'm aware of that the pandemic helped in was discipline problems did reduce. However, you won't believe some of the issues that we had, or you might. It's absolutely mind-boggling that such would even occur, but, but it does. So the effectiveness of online learning, then, we've learned that it can be effective and very effective for certain students. But for other students, nothing takes the place of face-to-face learning. Now, if you can't provide that due to whatever, inclement weather or conditions, then we need to make sure that we're doing the very best we can do with our online strategy in learning to really hold the attention of students and make them want to sign on, but not go beyond that, make them participate. And we also learned that you just can't sign each teacher, just can't sign eight hours of work. Believe it or not, in the beginning, I'm probably exaggerating a little bit, but they assigned too much work, didn't think about that that student had four or five other subjects that they would have to do. So we've, hopefully we've solved that one. The next thing down here says, "Reflection on your career and longevity as a superintendent." Well, I'm in, March 1st marked 25 years of being superintendent in whatever months, March, April, two months into the 26th year. I can stand before you and truthfully say that I have really enjoyed this job, but also can tell you that I've never had a bad job. I've enjoyed every job I've ever had. And back as a teenage boy, still in high school, the best way for me to make some money was catch chickens. That's right, catch chickens, brawls. And they get put in a coop and carried to the processing plant, and then you buy it, either whole or cut up or whatever. And I learned a lot with that. As a matter of fact, the feed store was in about half a mile down from our house. And the first year that I was at the University of Georgia, Pat Ward, who ran that, called me one day and said, "I sure need you to help us out a little bit this summer." And I'd already had a part-time job, but I said, "Okay, I will. I've started in a week, I will do it for a week." And you know, I forgot, I forgot one thing. I forgot that that wasn't going to be my lifetime job, and I knew that. But what I forgot was that those guys that were catching those chickens, that was probably the best job they were going to get, or at least for some of them. And one night, we were, we had about 35,000 chickens to catch, put on a truck and send to the processing plant. And we'd already caught about 20,000. And they were tired, hungry, and they wanted to eat, but I knew we were supposed to meet the truck at this place, and we just had time to get there. So I said, "Nope, we don't have time to eat, guys. We're going, we're going to go and get a truck." I had to go through the city of Gainesville, and had to stop for a traffic light. And they were all in the back of a truck. That's against the law too now, I guess, but that's where they were, at least most of them. I think one of them was in a cab with me. So when we got to the chicken house, guess what? It was the other guy and me and the truck driver. The other guys had hopped off at the traffic light to get something to eat. Go back to the restaurant, we'd eaten there before at night, and not many places open at 11, 12 o'clock anyway. But sure enough, they were in there eating. And I went in and paid for the meal and said, "Guys, when y'all get ready, come on now, we need to go." Every one of them got on a truck. Sort of an humbling learning experience, you know? Sometimes you just have to listen to people. You just have to make sure that their, their desire to get this done is not always yours. And if you can't use some motivation or whatever, and I wasn't thinking about using motivation then, I was thinking about catching those chickens and getting them to the plant. But you know, in education, we can never forget the fact, no matter how good we are, we, we need to connect with students. Those of us in the administration need to connect with teachers on their level. And I don't mean hierarchy levels, but I just mean as a person, as a human being. We also need to connect with students and their parents. And during this past year, and I'm sure Chris and anybody else in here might be connected with school district, parents really got involved. And they're still involved. There, there were days that I'd look at my computer screen and it was just a sea of red. No way I could answer everyone, even though I tried to answer all I could, but it's just one of those things that you learn some things that we all need to know and do as a board member. The people that run the school districts and the boards and whatever, people that really carry out a lot of the policies and things that you all set. The legislature, we always breathe a sigh of relief when they finish, not because that they don't do good work, I mean to do things, but it's just different. Do you know how many laws there are on bullying? Now, bullying's a bad thing. It's terrible. But you, we don't need another law on bullying. What we need is, we need parents to be aware of their kids, and if they got somebody that tends to be a bully, then nip it there. Or we need to also, those of us in schools, make sure that we are always aware of that. And one of the, one of the issues that some of you may remember, when Frank, I forgot his name now, Frank Boyd, I believe, was president of Eastern Airlines, and he was, he was charged by kicking stewardess under the table in a negotiating session. And you know, sometimes maybe we just sort of need to kick them under the table to make them behave. And one of the things that I think if we, if we can do with those things, maybe prohibit some of the issues. Now, discipline is an issue. It's an issue in a lot of different places, probably anywhere there's a school, generally there is an issue. And there are ways of handling that, and not, many, most of them aren't good, but there are ways of handling it. The PBIS program has been a good program that helps us really focus on trying to prohibit it from happening. One of the things I told my person that oversees our schools, or the schools report through him, I probably should say, see if we can plan something for the assistant principals that will help them not escalate a problem. You know, every now and then, there's a problem going on, and somebody who's supposed to handle it shows up, and it don't get better, it gets worse. And that's not normally what you need. You need somebody that can handle the problem. So all of these issues that we have, and speaking of longevity, those are the ones that, the two that come to mind is the one that's been the most difficult to deal with. And that is the discipline issues, as well as the things that really cause people just not to do what it is that they're supposed to do. And thank goodness, that's a very small number, but one's too many, and one can really cause you a lot of problems. Says, "I've just enjoyed my tenure." Let me leave it at that. Says, "Wrap up with a leadership charge in doing what is in the best interest of students." A very good, very good statement. First of all, everything we do in school needs to be done in the best interest of students. Now, just take discipline. One of the reasons that we need a code of conduct, maybe I should say, one of the reasons we need a code of conduct is to protect students from other students or other people. It's not just to have a student conduct code. And the enforcement of that student conduct code has to be in the best interest of students. And sometimes a situation comes up to where a student has to be disciplined. But when it gets right down to it, the teacher can't teach with that student in the classroom acting the way that they're acting. So that's really protecting the rights of who? The other students in the classroom. Now, hopefully, we have the, some procedures and processes that can take that student and really remove them from that environment, but yet continue their education. And I'm, Chris, I'm about ready to say that we're not going to have any more out-of-school suspensions because we're going to use what we've been using, digital learning. Now, I don't know how successful that's going to be, but at the same time, we may try that. And I do know they don't do much out-of-school when you suspend them. But sometimes if the behavior is such that you have to do that to protect the rights of the other students and the rules and regulations of student conduct, do that. But I think we are going to try that as a trial to just see if we can, and we'll assign some of the, some staff to obviously make sure that there is some follow-up with that. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't know if I've said anything that's of value to you or what you want me to say today, but I do know that this is a, this is a challenging time for all of us. It's a challenging time for teachers, it's a challenging time for school administrators, it's a challenging time for students. And the people that are utmost on my mind are the, the challenge that it is for parents, and particularly parents that both need to work. And when the kids aren't in school, that does create a real issue. And we always say, "Well, that's not our issue." Well, it really is. And anytime, anything that prohibits a kid from getting educated becomes all of our issues. Because the better educated they are, the better citizens generally that they're going to make. There are, there are some educated folks to the highest degree that aren't very, don't behave very well, but as a general rule, education does help direct and structure a person's life to where they can manipulate and manage through some of the challenging issues that they have. So as we think about this next year, hopefully, the pandemic will allow us to do some things we were not able to do the last time. We, I've been a great follower, I guess, of the CDC. All I know is they know a lot more about it than I do. I also know that they lower, they know a lot more about it than my colleagues, okay? So that's where I base my decisions when it comes to have school or not school, particularly in the pandemic, not in inclement weather. I understand they don't show up for inclement weather either, so I don't want to talk to them. We want to talk with people that believes you need to be in school if you could be there safely. And I've been doing this, folks, for a number of years, and I have never expected anybody to report to school that couldn't do it safely. However, just because you've got somebody that can't drive with a little ice on the road every mile or two apart, doesn't mean you ought to penalize everybody else for not doing it. So we, that's why I get this reputation of he never calls school off. I want you to know, that's not the total truth. I do call school off occasionally whenever it just needs to be called on, but not if there's, you know, ice spot or two, a little, a little frost, jack frost, I guess. Thank you, I've enjoyed my time with you.
I just want to take just a second here just to recognize, I mean, like, even down in South Georgia, Hurley County, we knew it would happen, it would be years and years and years of success ahead. But with that being said, I think that, you know, definitely, Mr. Will Banks, you have that breakthrough. I think that if you did not listen or hear anything being said, his intent will do what the best work is. I've distinguished the service medallion, it's the highest medallion that I give out. We do have several, several we can. But on the back, it does say, let me pull that, I don't have my glasses. But it says, "Presented in recognition in your commitment to excellence and the, again, the education of Georgia students." And I think that says enough, so I want to just present you with this and say, "Congratulations for the years of service." All right? Thank you.
Still wanted to say, Scott, let me have a few minutes of personal privilege, because just, just real quick, anybody that knows Mr. Will Banks, if you want a meeting, there's this Cracker Barrel right near, right near Glenette's headquarters, you can catch him there, but you gotta, you've got to be early.
I got a table in there.
He does, he's got a table, and you better be early, because he was always the first one there at school and the last one to leave. His work ethic has been impeccable. But he summed it up. As I came through leadership on our State Board of Education, I called him for counsel several times. And there's a few things I learned, and he just really summed it up, and Superintendent Woods just reiterated it. The kids, you've got to meet them where they're at. Their problems are our problems, and we have to focus on them. And also learned... And also learned, he, he, he did this, this is why Gwinnett, I think one of the main reasons is done so well, every kid, no matter how poor, how wealthy, or what box you check them into, wants to learn and has the ability to learn. And if you will charge your people and give them the tools they need to do that in that school, but hold them accountable to high expectations, they will meet them and those children will learn. And that's our, and I think that's our biggest thing we can do as a state, is to do that. And then the only thing I can say, all, all the words have been there, the only thing I can say that to, in honor and recognition is, because of his leadership, I've trusted him with my three children. I'm a lifelong Gwinetian. And two of my children have gone all the way through K-12 because frankly, I had a choice. A lot of parents don't, but I had a choice on where to send my children. And I chose to send them to Gwinnett County because of the educational opportunities that they had and the quality of education that they got. I'm proud to say, you know, one's made it through college, that's what she wanted to do, and I was just getting some, some texts back there, she didn't know I was, I was busy, needed to be intently listening, but my second, because of opportunities at Grayson High School and Best Buddies Club, that gave her the spark to be a teacher. And she's graduating in two weeks, but she's going to be a special education teacher. Yeah. And it's through those opportunities, because she had such a good basis and a good quality experience, and those experiences that she was exposed to, that she's going to carry that on. And then my third has got the opportunity of a lifetime, because not only do we need to meet the children, I'm not going to say disadvantaged or just so different, I heard that today, they're different, they have different needs, but also in Gwinnett County, no kid is held back on how far they can achieve. Unfortunately, my oldest takes after her mother and she is in an incredible program at Archer High School, a cohort that she's going through right now that is going to prepare her for whatever she wants to be. But meeting those kids where they are, no matter where they are, and saying, we are not going to take excuses, we're going to hold people accountable and we're going to provide leadership in that culture. And I just wanted to say I'm indebted to you, I appreciate you, and it's been my honor to call you a friend. Thank you.
All right, everybody, that brings us, and Dr. Will Banks, I can't begin to thank you how so very much for appearing today and bringing your insightful comments. And I love what Governor Kemp had to say on the dais the other day, and he says that although you may be leaving Gwinnett, you're not leaving education, he's going to find something for you to do. So with that, we're going to take a break. I believe there's some box lunches in here for board members and some others, and so then we're going to come back here and then we're going to still kind of have that Q and A with regard to some of the standards discussion that we had. All right?
What can I just say too? I appreciate the board choosing to see that you have or will have a tour. And Mr. Robinson, our partnership, we've got some, uh, pretty good stuff for you guys tonight, so all that's money over there for you. Obviously, we have Truist Park here in Calhoun, so we've been able to do our partnership with Gray's to keep guys up with, uh, activities for the night.
Thank you very much, Chris. This is a, this is an amazing facility and listen, we're, you know, the thoughts about this particular segment, and I should say just the entire retreat, was really informational and, but also a focus on career technical agricultural education as well. And this is a big part of it. There are several college and career academies, you know, that we have throughout the state. I know Clayton County has one, Gwinnett has it, you have here in Marietta City Schools, and obviously in Cobb County, Hall County. But what we, what we all see is the importance of this aspect. And so wanted to really highlight that. So we're going to hear from Barbara Wall with regard to an update on CTAE. We're going to do a tour this afternoon of the Marietta High College and Career Academy, and then tomorrow here. And it should be just a very, very revealing opportunity to see what amazing things they're doing in these. So again, lunch is served, please help yourselves, come back to the table, and we'll continue with a Q and A portion for the standards. Thank you so much.
We had talked about kind of continuing the Q and A portion, so we're starting on time at one o'clock. We're going to do fifteen minutes of Q and A. And then Tiffany is going to, Ms. Taylor is going to go ahead and when she does the Charter and Flexibility, we're shortening that segment up to forty-five minutes. Okay, but we're going to go ahead with the Q and A portion right now. And I know, and Helen, I'm catching you mid-bite, but I know some other people had some questions that they wanted to talk to Superintendent Woods about with regard to standards. So, are you ready?
Yeah, I can ask. Richard, what about the foundations of algebra and the Technical College readiness? I have gotten a couple of things and I'm, since it wasn't in my district, I forwarded it to Martha. But, do we have, where are those courses?
I mean, those classes have not changed. I mean, there were, I don't think, Matt, you can add, I mean, I can chime in with that. I think there were no significant, if any, changes whatsoever, so that's why, I mean...
Well, they weren't listed on the, on the, on the courses, according to what I got. They couldn't find foundations at all, and the Technical College readiness didn't look like one of the twelve or fourteen...
There were no changes made, so that's why they're not posted?
Oh, you mean you're keeping the courses?
How they are now is how they're going to stay.
But I did ask, I mean, I spoke with Matt, and I did ask that we send out information to let people know those classes are still there. It's just there was nothing that changed, so there was nothing to say.
So you don't plan on eliminating those, as soon as it can still, and will they be like a math course?
Just like they're used now. So, just as, as is, is how they'll continue.
Well, I think that, that's great news, because that has been a major concern.
We are going to send that information out, and I asked Matt, just let all the districts know that just because you didn't see it, these courses are still, I mean, it's just like calculus. I mean, you didn't see calculus, but it's still there, and trigonometry is still there, and those classes definitely are still there. Especially Euclidean. Yeah, but we'll let, we'll let the districts know that just because you didn't see them, these are still viable classes.
All right, Mike, do you have a question?
Mine's extremely simple. I think there was like ten of us, and if I'm counting, I'm counting staff and everybody that was down at the bootstrap. We are going over this in the May meeting, correct, for the math when it comes back? Because I feel sure that we all heard about the same thing, so I just wanted to make sure we are going to be going over this at the May.
Yeah, as far as...
We had talked about kind of continuing the Q and A portion, so we're starting on time at one o'clock. We're going to do fifteen minutes of Q and A. And then Tiffany is going to, Ms. Taylor is going to go ahead and when she does the Charter and Flexibility, we're shortening that segment up to forty-five minutes. Okay, but we're going to go ahead with the Q and A portion right now. And I know, and Helen, I'm catching you mid-bite. But I know some other people had some questions that they wanted to talk to Superintendent Woods about with regard to standards. So, are you ready?
Yeah, I can ask.
Okay.
Richard, what about the foundations of algebra and the technical college readiness? I have gotten a couple of things and I'm, since it wasn't in my district, I forwarded it to Martha. But, do we have it, where are those courses? I know-
I mean, those classes have not changed. I mean, there were, there was, I don't think, Matt, you can add, I mean, I can chime in with that. I think there were no significant, if any, changes whatsoever, so that's why, I mean-
Well, they weren't listed on the, on the, on the courses, according to what I got. They couldn't find foundations at all, and the technical college readiness didn't look like one of the twelve or fourteen-
There were no changes made, so that's why they're not posted? There's no changes being-
Oh, you mean, you're keeping the courses?
Yeah, the courses-
How they are now is how they're going to stay.
Oh, okay, I get it.
But I did ask, I mean, I spoke with Matt, and I did ask, ask that we send out information to let people know, those classes are still there, it's just there was nothing that changed, so there was nothing to say.
To post.
So you don't plan on eliminating those, the systems could still-
No, 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 I mean, yeah, yeah.
Just like they're used now.
Yeah.
So, just as, as is, is how they'll continue.
Yeah.
I think that, that's great news, because that has been a major concern, because-
But we are going to send that information out, and I asked Matt, just let all the districts know that just because you didn't see it, these courses are still, I mean, it's just like calculus. I mean, you didn't see calculus, but it's, it's still there, and trigonometry's still there, and, and those classes definitely, I mean, are still there, so-
Watch your language, Mike.
Yeah, but we'll let, we'll let the districts know that just because you didn't see them, these are still, still viable classes.
Yeah.
All right, Mike, do you have a question?
Mine's extremely simple. I think there was like ten of us, and if I'm counting, I'm counting staff and everybody that was down at the Bootstrap. We are going over this in the May meeting, correct, for the math, when it comes back? Because I feel sure that we all heard about the same thing, so I just wanted to make sure we are going to be going over this at the, um, May.
Yeah, as far as, as May, I mean, we, I mean, we're going to look at, kind of, as I said, halting the process.
Yeah, that's what, I'm sure that'll come up, is what I'm saying. I think everybody here heard the same thing when we were down there, so, that's fine, just a simple question.
Yeah, yeah, with that, so, yeah.
Okay.
And the things with the crosswalk, too, maybe we can discuss that a little bit more, some more.
Okay.
All right, are there any other, Matt, I knew you had a question.
I wanted to get a short one in for everybody else to talk. I appreciate the standards review revision process summary. As a new board member, you know, it's new to me, so I appreciate the summary of what our role is. Because I've been curious, there's been a lot of conversation about that, so I appreciate that. Second of all, I echo what other people said at Bootstrap. They say it's too much. So, I'm new to education, so my question is, and this may be going down a rabbit hole, there's only so much you can cut back. So are you, is the idea to try to shift it? Shift it around to other grades, or, there's only so much you can cut back? I mean, that's just using logic, so I was just curious.
But, as I shared, these people have said there's too much, okay? So that's why we're going to invite them, and said, if you say it's too much, and you tell me what I need to cut out. You know, I think that there again, I mean, one of the things I heard, as I shared, third grade shifted stuff up, fifth grade shifted stuff down, and fourth grade all of a sudden said, what in the world's going on? We have too much. You know, I think we have to look at what is important in math. Now, there are some things that we could look at, I think geometry appears in multiple grades. Now, is that necessary? There would probably be some discussion on that. High school looks a little bit different, and that's a discussion that we cannot do in isolation just because of our relationship with USG and the university system. You know, it's, it's what are you looking for? I mean, as I spoke to one of the members over there, I said, math may look a little bit different. I think if you're taking, you want to become an engineer, science, neurosurgeon, whatever, that looks different. Because I'm taking from my standpoint as a liberal arts major. Okay, I didn't need calculus, I didn't need trig, I didn't need anything, and I haven't used that since day one. But there are some things where people are looking at, you know, data analysis, and, and that's where we're trying to land on that. I think that, again, Algebra II is one of those classes which has been the big hiccup in math for years. If you looked at what, what I've seen so far, it looks more like an exploratory class that eventually allows you to go into different areas according to USG. But is that what's best for our kids? I think we've got to have that discussion now. I would say that's where our math teachers probably disagree a little bit with, with that. They think that we should probably have a traditional Algebra II class, a traditional geometry class. And I think that as we look at, at pathway progressions and diplomas, I, I think that what, what do you need when you go in TSG? I, I think that's a viable question, but I think that with our, our kids as well, they need to understand that depending which pathway you choose, you may either open or close some doors. And that has to be fully understood, or, or at least doors may be temporarily closed unless you plan to pick that up. Say, you know, maybe I'm taking, want to take a calculus class somewhere at TSG, or want to take it USG. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to be tough, but, you know, I'd said, if we have, if we hear, hear these complaints, then, you know, we're going to invite the people who said, please, help us out.
And I would just add to that, that we did hear that when we did this public survey on the current set of standards.
Yeah.
That was a concern with the current set of standards, that there was too much to, to teach, too much content. So I think it shows the challenge, because of course, we gave that, those results to the teachers that looked at the current set of standards and made these recommendations, and they had a challenge with kind of deleting some things or streamlining some things. So I, I think, I think it is going to be challenging, but I think one thing we want to do is make sure things are balanced across the grade levels, that we don't have, you know, too much shoved into one grade level. And the other thing is just making sure that, particularly in the early grades, that we're really focused on those fundamental skills and expand opportunities as kids go through the, through the progression.
And then one more thing, the, I'd like to know just a roundabout number of how many people were involved from the working committees to the academic review committee? Can you give me an idea?
Yeah, about three hundred people.
Three hundred people?
Yes.
But math.
And, and how, how many of those were DOE staff?
We, we only have four people on our math team, so. And most of their time was spent in the, you can imagine the logistics behind pulling something that, like that off. That was their role. They weren't in the room, sitting with the team, helping graph the standards. They were facilitating and running the meeting to have all that going on.
And these would be three hundred people who are doing this pretty much every day, professionals, boots on the ground?
Majority were teachers, classroom teachers, about two hundred were classroom teachers, and then we had like math coordinators, curriculum directors, those types of individuals.
Thank you.
But, can I just clarify something, Matt? When we say two hundred or three hundred teachers, when you look at K through twelve, and you put eight teachers in kindergarten, or six in first grade and, and second, and you go through all of those grades, and then you have the twelve or fourteen math courses that were there, it sounds like a lot, but two hundred and not, I mean, it's divided up, so you might have eight in first grade, or six in-
It was, we had about ten to twelve on each team.
Okay, well-
And then, you know, we have lots of high school math courses that we look at. But I'll just say for, you know, when we looked at this in two thousand and fifteen, we had probably, I think, you know, six or seven teachers for K two. So it's just to compare the process we did in two thousand and fifteen, which I think we had about forty teachers for the whole K twelve experience, versus now, we've had about two hundred classroom teachers and about three hundred math professionals when you count all the others. I do think there's a significant difference in the level of involvement than what was happening in two thousand and fifteen versus this review process.
And I would just add, too, just, just remember, I mean, now we're at the public review. Now, that public review is getting a lot of folks, and so you're expanding that, that, that pool of, of teachers and experts and people that are involved in there, so, you know, it, it, I think for each phase, it kind of almost exponentially kind of goes up and down. The academic review, I'm not sure how many people were involved with that, Matt.
At least a dozen on that committee, probably more.
For what this is worth, too, for back information, in two thousand and fifteen, that was when Governor Deal asked the board, we had the executive order, and the RESSAs, every RESA, Kate put in for K through twelve teachers to go and, and look at each one of the standards by grade level, if they liked them, wanted to move them or not. So that participation came about because of the executive order, and also because there were two hundred teachers across the street in two hundred, in twenty fifteen that didn't want those standards to be thrown out. So it wasn't like we're doing this type of thing. It was like, okay, every RESA in every district, K through twelve people, go in. If you want to move them, change them, make changes, throw them out, they had the, the leverage to do that. What we got at the end of that were a lot of our districts coming, making comments. If they didn't make a comment, it was because they didn't want to change anything. But Matt, that, because of that, when y'all, when you came on board, you, you got to see what teachers were already saying. You know, we need clarity to these, the way they're written, they were too broad. We needed some more resources aligned. So, that, that has been said for years, and, and we've done it. We've done it with these standards. You've added the clarity, you've added the elements. I think that the design of it is great. I think what we heard at Bootstrap is the content is, is a lot, and moving back and forth. The question I have on the content of that for middle school was brought up. If we move the algebra linear equations to eighth grade, then before, when, in middle school, you could have sixth graders taking sixth grade math, and then half of seventh grade. Seventh grade taking seventh grade and half of eighth grade. Eighth graders taking eighth grade and starting into algebra. So, how is that going to affect the dynamics if we move these? Is that going to affect the ability for those kids to be able to take algebra in eighth grade? Because it's a lot in there.
I mean, they, they can take algebra in eighth grade, that won't change, change that at all. But I think that topic is one that that group needs to look at and talk about, for sure. But I do think this round of standards review, the current governor had a little different charge than the former governor did on what his expectations were, what we were charged to do.
Because-
And that's what we're trying to meet. So, I think they're different, and I acknowledge that, but I'm just trying to stay in the moment and how we move forward as a state to get the best standards for our kids. And I do think, you know, we have gotten a lot of feedback. The good thing is, is it's not all over the place. It's pretty targeted and consistent, I think is a good thing. Two, it's coming from our classroom teachers who teach math, which is another positive, in my opinion. And three, I think the general structure that we've put out there, and the standards and the instructional supports are good. Again, it's just the sheer quantity of some things, and where some things landed at certain grade levels. So I don't feel like we're that far away from the finish line. It's just, we still got definitely some work to do, and to the superintendent's point, we don't want to rush this, bringing it up in May. We're almost at the May board meeting, so it's right around the corner. We want to spend our time, close out the survey, give y'all the report on what the survey says, convene a group, and then in June, have that updated draft set of standards that responds to the survey that we've put out there.
And, and I would just, you know, kind of conclude on, on this part. I think the challenging part is that our kids are not progressing together as a herd. I mean, they are spread out. I mean, they come in at different levels, they learn, I mean, we, I mean, I, I would say that, that, you know, for some kids, they're concrete thinkers, and they don't move to abstract thinkers all at the same time. So that's a challenge when you think about age development and progression. But, that being said, we're expecting every kid that once they get in seventh grade, you're going to master all these same standards. And again, when you get to eighth grade, it's assumed that you mastered the previous grade standards. So I, you know, I even think that, you know, it even kind of ties a little bit to the testing and stuff, what we expect. You know, we want our kids to move at the same pace, but the reality is, they're not going to move at the same pace. And, you know, I think it is trying to say that. I mean, for some kids, they, they'll be honest, they'll be, they will, they will, they could go through these standards, and they could fly through. But I think some kids, we just have to realize that, you know, if you get X basics, that's good, okay? I, I think we're trying to say this is a, a basic level of knowledge that you have to have to be successful for the next level. And, you know, and that's always been a challenge with standards right now. It's just, you know, just trying to say, hey, at some point, you know, when does that light click on? And I think to Matt's point, I think we're looking, talking about, I mean, if you can do algebra in eighth grade, you know, you're probably, I mean, that's a minority of kids, it's not the majority of kids. But, you know, that's just, you know, I think just recognizing that we learn at different, different speeds and different levels, and, you know, but we can all be successful.
All right, are there any other questions on the standards? All right. With that, we're going to turn this over to Tiffany Taylor to lead us on the discussion relative to Charter and Flexibility. Tiffany?
Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, so, thank you for the time to talk about some updates related to Charter and Flexibility. Actually, most of our time today will really be focused on Senate Bill one fifty-three, really because of some of the requirements outlined in that particular bill, as well as a lot of the timelines that are mentioned. If you recall, at our March, at your March State Board of Education meeting, it was briefly mentioned, before this bill was passed by the House and the Senate, that this particular bill was coming forth, and that there had been discussions about it. And I know that many of you have heard from some of the schools that will potentially be impacted by this bill, and so want to make sure that both you are aware of at least some of the details of the information that's included in the legislation, what it means for the schools that are going to be impacted, and what it means for both the department and you as a board. So, I just do, as we talk about Senate Bill one fifty-three, I want to make sure that, A, to give you context, this is really sort of an introductory conversation about this legislation. I anticipate that as the months go on, we will probably on a very regular basis be coming back to this particular bill and its requirements, because it will require, be a lift for us. So this will be an ongoing and regular conversation, but I want to make sure you have the background. Oops, sorry, I didn't mean to go back. How do I go back? My apologies. So, in terms of some of the details of the bill, this bill was sponsored initially by Senators Greg Dolezal and Blake Tillery on the Senate side, but was sponsored in the House by Speaker Protem, Jan Jones, who really led the charge around this work as it relates to system collaborative charter schools. And really, the main impetus of this bill is, it really is a funding bill, and really addresses how these schools are funded, and is, is trying to fix that aspect, which we'll go into details in a few moments. But the schools that are immediately impacted by this bill are Mountain Education Charter High School, Foothills Charter High School, and Coastal Plains. So, just in my, my teacher role, I just want to highlight some of the, the definitions, so we're on, on the same, same playing field. The, there are some definitions in legislation that are outlined, and particularly, the first one is alternative charter school. And you see the definition there, I won't necessarily read it to you, but essentially, this is a new definition. We don't currently have alternative charter schools as a definition. But it is a school that's authorized by one or more local systems, and this is important because it is a feature of these schools currently. They're not authorized by systems, but they work with a number of different systems as a part of their operating model. It changes the definition, or adds a definition of charter petitioner. This is in a different section of the law, but this definition of charter petitioner is a little bit different than the definition of charter petitioner in Article thirty-one of Title twenty, which is the state education code. And this particular definition adds in both, adds in adult learning providers, which is not included in the regular definition of charter petitions, and it also allows for multiple of these sort of petitioners to come together as an authorizer. And then the final definition on this page, related to system collaborative charter schools, this definition was created specifically to capture the three schools that I just mentioned. And so, as we talk about system collaborative charter schools, right now, we're talking about those three schools only. We're talking about Mountain Ed, Foothills, and Coastal Plains. They're the only ones currently that meet that definition. And then we have a state chartered special school. Now, this definition, for those of you that have been on the board for many years, is not a new definition. It was already outlined in law, it was already a function that was under the State Board of Education and managed and supported by DOE. But essentially, it's a charter school that serves as a special school, and is authorized directly between the petitioner, which is the charter school, and the State Board of Education. So, if you recall from presentations that we had done in December related to charter schools, for those of you that are newer to the board, we have locally approved charter schools, and for those charter schools, remember, it's a three-party contract. It's the charter petitioner, which is the charter school, the local board of education, and the state board of education. This function for a state chartered special schools allows for the direct authorization of the state board, between the state board and the local charter school. So it, it cuts out the local board of education as the middleman. And usually, when that happened with state chartered special schools, it was because a lot of times, a local charter school had gotten a denial. A petitioner had gotten a denial from the local board, and then they would seek out then authorization directly from the State Board of Education. We currently do not have any state special charter schools. As you know, all of our direct authorizations between the state and a local petitioner happen right now through the State Charter Schools Commission. So the system collaborative charter schools, as I mentioned, there are three, and we, we told you who the three were, but sort of some general characteristics or features. Right now, they're currently authorized by the State Charter Schools Commission. They really support non-traditional students in earning a high school diploma. So they're, they're operating on a non-traditional model. A lot of their courses or classes are in the evenings. Some, a lot of the, offer their classes between like four and nine on many Thursdays. Really thinking about an individualized, personalized experience for students that are having difficulty completing their high school diploma. They focus on, as I say, dropout recovery or credit recovery. They serve multiple districts, and so we'll- They serve multiple districts, and so we'll talk about that a little bit on the next slide. But um you'll see a number of them have, you know, like between fourteen and sixteen different sites, different school systems that they're working with. Um, and another key feature is that on the governing boards of these uh state charter schools, these, the either leadership, superintendents, or um executive level staff of those systems serve on those governing boards. So that governance model really is sort of collaborative based on um the systems that they serve. And then these systems are funded as state charter schools, they're funded completely by the state. And so um if you look at sort of the chart that I had there, really that breakdown, they get obviously the state QBE um allotments for the students that they serve. Um, but then they also receive the state charter supplement um by the state as well, which is really um the state's way for, in supporting state charter schools, of kind of making up that local portion um that those state charter schools would typically uh receive. And what uh the really, if you look back when I talked earlier about the impetus of this bill, is really how do we address that state charter supplement piece to then um uh replace with that with sort of some sort of local buy-in option? That was really the kind of goal of the legislation. That's correct. So just uh on the next couple of slides, it just includes some information about each of the schools. And I'll, in the interest of time, um, you know, go through those, you know, really quickly. But you can see, especially if you look at the um enrollment for each, but the really, the different system sites. Um, you see, as I mentioned, there are several different systems um that are served by each of those high schools. And there's your information for Foothills, similarly. And Coastal Plains. And I'll go back just a bit too, because because one of the things, um, another reason sort of these bills also came forward. If you looked on um the slide that I showed you for Coastal Plains, the dark blue are their current sites. But you see the the ones that are kind of shaded with the lines were the potential expanded sites that they um uh have received interest in terms of expanding in those areas. Um, and uh, you know, a couple of years ago, the commission really had kind of decided we're not going to be able to allow the continued expansion because of the additional uh and continued cost to the state. And so really, this is about how do we provide that local buy-in such that um these uh schools that actually are providing a service um to their districts and are um supporting students are able to then also work with other systems across the state with the local buy-in.
Tiffany, you and I were at that House hearing that day. Um, they discussed the future of lack of funding for these. Where where is that at now? That's where we're headed on this next slide?
When you say lack of funding?
You remember they said they were going to phase them, uh, there were going to be like a three-year phase-out plan for a lot of them?
Correct, so there's a-
Because there wasn't the uh the QBE or whatever, was not going to be able to fund them anymore? Which one was it?
So um it was the, it wasn't the QB, again, it's the charter supplement. Again, that was the, what uh they're trying to address here. And they did, as we go through, we'll talk about what that timeline looks like for um those schools right now. But really, the legislation gives them a couple of years at their current sort of funding structure. But then there's a cutoff date where then they have to shift and adjust from that funding structure to one that includes local buy-in.
Well, I think a concern then going forward is with all the slashed lines. Can you go back to that other slide just for a moment on Coastal? That's my area, and of course, it spreads the laws across across a couple of the rest of our areas too. But if we're, the funding is uh maybe depleted from these guys, is that, are they knowledgeable of that? Do they know that going in, if they want to try to start something up that the funding's possibly going away?
Butch, turn your mic on.
You want to share our conversation briefly uh that we had with the the administrators of those districts and how happy they are?
Well, now, the smart aleck in me would say, no, I really don't, but uh, yeah, I'm going to. Um, but I I I, we've heard from all three of the superintendents of these charters. In fact, we met with two of them at the Bootstrap Conference. I met with Tiffany beforehand because I wanted to make sure that I understood the legislative intent behind this, as well as the current status, and she did a great job of catching me up. What Butch is referring to is that, and and Butch, are you, when you asked that FTE, that twelve thousand FTE, we we could have done a lot with twelve thousand FTE in the systems where we were superintendents because neither one of us had nearly that much. And when you talk to the Foothills program, Sherry Givney Sherman's program, all of her, all of those sites are located in existing high schools, okay? So the FTE, you're not, and most of those districts are providing that the the utilities cost and the space and all of, free of charge. So that is a lot of money per student to fund this program. When you factor in that you're not paying for a facility, you're probably not paying for transportation in most cases because most of these students can get there themselves. Some do, some don't, but in some, in some of these districts, they don't provide transportation. And now, depending on the, you know, you can have a teacher that might be, since we're on the subject of math, a ma- high school math teacher might be supervising kids in eight or nine different math courses in the same room. But it's all done on the computer, and so that teacher is primarily providing academic support. There's not a lot of direct instruction. So th- the business model for this school, I mean, for these schools, is a pretty cost-effective one. And when I ask them, what are they going to do when that thirty million dollars that the state's currently providing to them runs out? They all seem to have a plan for how they're going to be able to do it post this funding mechanism. Uh, and it doesn't really include going to the districts where the students are coming from and asking for financial support from them to provide some of the local FTE dollars from that. Because although Coastal Plains there has, I think, fourteen systems or counties, I don't know, I haven't counted them all up. But they get kids from a whole lot more than those fourteen. They just show up at those centers. So there's kids from Dawson, Georgia, and there's kids from over in Early County that are enrolled in this program that are not, you know, that are not being supported at all by their school district. Okay? It's it's a, it's a fairly uh complicated uh attendance zone. And and when I asked Ricky Rents, who's the superintendent of this one, and he told us they have all these other sites that want to come on, they have, they have a a population that they think would be very well-served because they're even providing instruction and course credit to students who are older than the allowable FTE funding formula. There are kids that are over twenty-two years old enrolled in these programs that are five or six credits away from getting a high school diploma. And they get no FTE for those kids. So they all see a niche, I mean, I, I I have some other issues operationally with it, but from a financing standpoint, they know what's coming, they'd like to take the two years, whole harmless period. Is it two years, Tiffany?
Uh, it is, the first one's two years because it is through the end of their current contracts.
That's right, one's three and the, and the other two are three and one's two. That's right, because they're, when their charter uh petition comes back up, then that's when the money, the state support dries up. Um, they're all working with some other funding mechanisms, and they don't think right now that it's going to involve the local districts.
That's a pretty amazing, and I was in a little surprised at seeing that FTE uh dollar amount as well. Um, just here in Cobb County, I can tell you that if you took the the two public systems, Marietta City Schools, Marietta City Schools probably spends about twelve thousand five hundred on an on an FTE basis. Um, but Cobb County is actually around nine thousand, I think, when that's probably in that same ballpark.
Right.
So it, and uh-
Well, that that twelve thousand that Marietta spends, and I'm sure a portion of the nine thousand that Cobb spends, includes some federal support as well.
That's right, that's right.
And uh, I don't know what kind of, are are these charter high schools getting any uh federal money?
They receive federal support as well.
And my my point was, is that, you know, let's say, for example, all of a sudden, the entirety of the Cobb County School District came online. That's a three thousand dollar bump for them. That's three hundred and thirty-six million dollars.
That's right.
It's just a huge, huge delta that, you know, it's, that's not going to happen. But anyway, it's just an interesting way of looking at it.
So I'm curious, the new guy, um, if they don't have fixed costs in buildings and what it costs to own buildings, and why is it thirty to forty percent more FTE cost for their students?
I don't have an answer for that, and I think that's one of the concerns being expressed by the superintendents.
Well, I I, I think I have an answer, but I bet Tiffany does have, has a better one solid.
The one time I say you thought wrong on that one, I don't have an answer for that one.
Well, it's the, it's the type of student you're dealing with.
She may not want the answer.
Well, I, it it's, it's a funding mechanism that was designed for a school that's not this kind of school. It, the state charter school supplement was designed for a different purpose. And they took that allotment or allocation, stop me if I'm, if I'm going down the wrong way here, but they took that allocation and applied it to these schools that don't have the same fixed costs as standalone charter schools have. They got a building, they got, they got staff, they got, you know, they, they're serving lunch. They're not doing any of that. I mean, they don't have a building, I mean, they have a building, but they're not paying for it. They're using space that the district that hosts them is 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 providing, free of, free of charge.
And that's actually a a good point, and Tiffany, maybe you can speak to this. Um, if a, if a public school system shuts down a school and does not repurpose it, I believe there's a provision currently in law that allows a charter, for example, to step in and um utilize that facility.
That's correct.
With no transfer cost, I think it's, they just basically are able to walk right in.
That's what they did in Wayne County at the high school. That's what they used, the Coastal Plains took over that one. Uh, just real quick, Stan, you might know, and our Butch, both of you guys seem knowledgeable on this. And I, and I guess my problem is equity. You know, if you're, if you're saddling the burden for somebody else, it seems like they would want to be able to get some type of FTE dollars from those counties that they're serving. Is that anywhere in the forecast, the future?
I don't know the answer to that question, Mike. I I do know that when I asked the super, the superintendents of these three district, or charter districts, that question, their response was that um most of these, Foothills, that's the one that Morgan sits in, was really, it kind of started as a RISA, alternative credit recovery, okay? And which would just serve the districts in Northeast Georgia, RISA. Well, then, and Mountain Ed kind of was the same way. It was a pioneer, you know, RISA solution for credit recovery as- Prior to charter system. Well, it never really got legs until they got, they went through the charter system process, but they still kind of had it envisioned as my board of control, the RISA board of control, y'all know who those people are, would be the the board for these charter districts. Well, then they started getting requests outside their RISA service area. And trust me, if, there could be sixteen of these in Georgia, every RISA could have one. And I think, you know, maybe it will, right now, it's it's capped, I guess, so that's, that's not possible. But there, you don't see anybody down the Alabama line here. And there are a lot of districts up and down, from north, from all the way from Dade all the way to Seminole that would like to have their kids or have have the opportunity to participate in something like this. Um, so there are three, there could, there could be a lot more if the flexibility and the option was provided. Because I don't know of a superintendent uh in any of those districts that aren't currently represented that wouldn't be interested in participating in something like this. And the philosophy behind it, that's a whole nother discussion and how their, and their success rate and all, that's a whole nother discussion. But the fact is, there are, there's much more capacity for more of these than the current three that are operation, operating right now. With or without the state funding uh bump.
Just, what I'm-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to say, you know, like at Georgia Academy for the Blind, those districts that use that, they'd share the cost of the transportation, et cetera. I just didn't know if that was part of the future ongoing plans, or is that something that uh Rents and them are talking about? Or as far as sharing the love, I guess?
We've got uh two years to figure that out. And that's, that's really the charge, is that over the course of, during the whole harmless period, over the course of that period, and it's in the next few slides, but that the state board and the um these schools and the commission in the House and Senate budget offices work to figure out a funding model that works for these schools.
Do you, this is just a, do you think it's because of the type of student that there, that is there that the need for more resources and equip, different equipment is is the reason that the the FTE could be a little bit higher? I mean-
Well, they, and and I don't have a, I I wish I could give you a complete picture of what all of these look like. And I, but the only one I can really talk very articulately about is the one that sits where I live, and that's Foothills. And the the site in Morgan County operates at the high school from, they used to run from, I think, four till nine o'clock, and I think they've, because of COVID and some other situations, they've had to shrink that service window where kids can come in. And they take one class at a time. Uh, it's in terms of who's coming in, most of these kids are sixteen to twenty-one, and they're way off track for graduating. There are some kids that are younger than sixteen, and I've asked some questions about that. Um, and they provide a different level of service. Uh, if a child's parents wants the child removed from the school because of bullying or something like that, they can enroll here. Uh, I had a little heartburn over about not giving a kid a shot at regular high school before they go to a credit recovery high school. But for, there are some students, and we all know who they are, that these are kids that are fifteen, sixteen years old that are, they have to work during the daytime because they're supported, they're part of the family support mechanism for their family, and they can't do regular school. So I didn't want to be the guy that said, well, I wouldn't let a fourteen-year-old go there, but they are very careful about that, and they don't put them in classes with twenty-year-old students. They're, they're in a different room with different support. But in addition to the support, every student has a coach or a mentor that follows up, and most of these are retired teachers, that just provide guy, you know, uh, support services. Are you getting there on time? Are you going when you're supposed to? Just, you know, being a mom or a dad. And then they also have the services of the guidance and counseling program at the high school site where they're, so they, that somebody that knows about transcripts and course credits and how to get enough in the right academic areas so they can graduate. So there's other support service that they, you know, the guidance counselor at Morgan County High may go to work two hours a week at at the, at the credit recovery school and get paid by them, you know, to do that. But they're typically, you know, people that are already based at a, at a high school in that district. And so they're, they had, they have a good understanding of everything. The other, the teachers, uh, most of the ones that we know are retired teachers that are doing this because they can draw their retirement and work a couple of nights a week and still stay connected to kids, and they enjoy it.
Okay, we'll keep moving. So to go through some of the legislative requirements. So the requirements here are, it requires the establishment of a process to designate alternative charter schools. And so as I mentioned earlier, and I showed you in the definition of alternative charter schools, that that is not a a construct that we currently have, whereby you have multiple district authorizers for one school, and that school remain a school. Um, you know, with college and career academies, there are a few- Um, you know, with college and career academies, there are a few or a couple where we have, you know, multiple districts that authorize a college and career academy. But then those college and career academies operate as programs, which means that the student FTE and funding goes back to the home school. And here you're talking about a construct whereby you have authorizers for multiple authorizers for one single school, but yet that school remains a school and doesn't convert to a program. So we need to figure out what the logistics of that would even look like if that were an option. The next one is that it requires the transfer of these schools, these system collaborative state charters to state charter special schools by July first, two thousand twenty-one. Unless they go to an alternative, or unless they convert to alternative charter school, which, as we said, that's option is is not available right now. So by July first, we would need to convert these schools to state charter special schools. And we're currently right now, we've been, we've had two or three meetings with these schools, with the commission, with our budget and internal folks to really work around what are the logistics that need to happen for that July first transition in timeline. So we think that we're on track to to make that happen, but it is a lift. The next one is requires the transfer of existing system collaborative state charter schools to alternative charter schools by the end of each school's current contract. So as we mentioned, there are two schools whose contracts end in two thousand twenty-three, June thirty, two thousand twenty-three, and one that ends in June thirty, two thousand twenty-four. And then it does outline some of the temporary funding and expansion provisions and requirements. So what are the requirements specifically mentioned for the state board that's outlined in law? So we establish a process to designate alternative charter schools. So what does it even mean to be an alternative charter school and and how would would a local charter school be designated as such? Then to provide for that transfer and designation of existing system collaborative charter schools to the state char- uh, charter special schools by July first. The state board is authorized to approve attendance zones for these state special charter schools, uh, once they become such. And then to provide for the transfer and designation of these existing charter schools to alternative charter schools by the end of their contract. So each of those legislative requirements that were outlined were specifically stated as as responsibilities for the State Board of Education.
Tiffany, I have a question with regard to the attendance zones. Is that something that your team kind of flushes out before the recommendation is delivered to the state board? How's that process?
Yes, we would, we would work with the system collab, with the charter schools to work through those details before it comes to the state board, yes.
Tiffany, just a, I mean, just a question here, maybe for clarification, most of the students that attend these schools, is their program virtual and not face-to-face, or how is that? Because I mean, I'm just looking at Coastal Plains, that's a big area.
So they have, if you remember, they have multiple sites. And so a lot of their instruction is, well, it's face-to-face, but it's it's online instruction in face-to-face where they have somebody then that kind of monitors and guides them through the online curriculum. But a lot of them do participate face-to-face. Now, I think as a result of COVID, they've had some adjustments and it's been more remote. But their typical operating model has been more face-to-face with that guided instruction while you're there. But the face-to-face part doesn't look like your typical instruction. It looks like you're kind of individualized, sort of online programming.
Yeah, well, again, I I think working at an alternative school, which, again, part of that was credit recovery, so I kinda get that. I know I've talked with Dr. Johnson, I mean, and just the alternative school in general, uh, what you decide whether it's a program or a school, what does that look like? And of course, I know that does, you know, has an impact on funding as well. You know, I just, you know, thinking, I mean, when we start start talking about attendance zones, like I said, I'm just looking at Coastal Plains. Uh, that's gonna be a pretty big, unless you again have the creation of, you know, some some smaller entities, or I guess, you know, per RISA, I think that, you know, as we look at that. But, you know, I I think that as we look at this, we know, um, funding is what it is. I think that probably if this originally, you know, as was mentioned, I think the original intent was something. You know, you have smart people that can look and say, this is a great model to get extra funding with that as well. But I I guess my concern is always what type of quality education are these kids getting? Again, I think it's a wonderful model, being flexible. I think we've seen this, you know, somewhat at Wiregrass, uh, not Wire, yeah, was it Wiregrass? I think that the company, I think that, uh, you know, kids could come in, they could work, and but they had a lot of flexibility with their time. But, um, again, I'm just expressing a little bit of concern. I just know with credit recovery, and all credit recovery is not equal.
Right about that.
You know, uh, so I think that's, you know, I mean.
A bit of the heartburn I have about it too.
Yeah, well, I I mean, I'm just being honest with that, what that looks like. So I, you know, I'm just, and I and I and I don't want this, again, the situation where it appears to be just a dumping ground for kids. Uh, because if I dump these kids there, it sure does make my graduation at my home school in my home district look really good. Because I don't wanna undercut these kids' education. I think as we look at that and, you know, finding out what what the true picture is. Because I mean, these kids, they deserve a a good quality education as good as anyone else. Yeah, I think you're you're still looking at the expectations. We want all kids to graduate. And I think that there are some things we can look at. I I mean, I think that as we move forward, you know, just looking at what does what does the graduation pathway look like? I think that will help out. I think having flexibility of of recognizing not every kid needs to take the same X course uh, just because of the path they're gonna go. But I, like I said, I think the one good thing about the model, you have flex time that's built in into some things. Just because some of these kids, I mean, they may actually be a a top provider within their family, and and that's that's just real life. And I think we've seen that with COVID. Uh, there's a lot of kids not showing up because, you know, I can come back online, you know, later on, but I can work during the day. But, you know, the bottom line is, I think we still have to look at, um, you know, the quality of of whatever you're offering. Uh, like I said, I I just know from personal experience, uh, down at Irwin, uh, I didn't like our alternative model. I think it undercut kids, they basically could play, you know, they could run the game, and they could pass the courses. But did they learn anything? I I would question that. So I I think that's something that that all these schools, I mean, I don't care, it's a great model, it's something you can use. But, you know, I I think we really need to look and make sure these kids are getting a a good education. I mean, I I don't want anybody's education undercut, because if they graduate and all they got was a piece of paper and it leads to nowhere, then we have failed those children.
Well, I'll tell you, one of the things we did do as it relates to the accountability piece is go ahead and have these three schools serve on our, we have an alternative education advisory group that regularly to really look at what should the accountability measures look like for alternative schools or alternative education programs across the state. And there are a number of districts and and systems that have really been, and charter schools that have been lending their expertise to that work. And so these schools are also joining that advisory group as well, to really give their input and and expertise there as well.
Uh, if I won't take any of Ms. Tiffany's time, but I did serve as a mentor at Mountain Education for a year. So, you know, if anyone has any questions, you know, kind of what goes on, or if you just wanna have a conversation sometime about what it's like on the inside. I did serve as a mentor for the for the first year that Mountain Education was in Murray County.
So similarly for the department, that we also establish a process to designate these schools along with you, and that we really collect and analyze data about the effectiveness of these schools. So that is a requirement that's included in law. And then there were some provisions that were included as a result of, are related to the funding. So there's a temporary maintenance of funding, as was mentioned, for the duration of their current contracts. But there are also some temporary growth restrictions. So the board cannot allow for the expansion or extension, renewal or replication of these schools once they transition to state charter special schools. But those schools can increase student enrollment annually no more than three percent. And then it also says that they they're gonna add an additional site. They can add no more than one site each school year. So that's during that period that they are state special charter schools. And then additionally, if they do open a site, that one site per year, then that site must be within the same RISA where their headquarters are. And the, uh, any additional, the funding for those cannot be included within the state, the former state, uh, funding. So they wouldn't get the charter supplement for those additional sites. And so again, I just wanted to kind of highlight, as we talked a little bit about the state charter special schools versus the alternative charter schools. I mentioned some of these already. Really with the state charter special schools, they get to retain their status as LEAs. Our state charter special schools are LEAs. Um, so that's kind of helpful within the current, um, model. The state board, you are the authorizer, the direct authorizer. And there are kind of some structures and frameworks available to support them as LEAs, so that is helpful. In the short term, the state continues to pay the 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 full amount and the full portion. But what that local buy-in or if that's that's even the option, what that looks like would need to be developed over the next few years. Um, if we're gonna be able to do alternative charter schools, again, those system collaborative schools right now would probably more than likely become programs instead of LEAs, and they would have multiple authorizers instead of just a single authorizer with the state board. And the participating districts will likely have to provide some sort of local funding, and then we just need to develop what that structure looks like. And we talk a lot about the funding, but I think there are other things, like like who's the the primary fiscal agents? You know, do they, uh, what are the different contracts then that they would need to execute with each of those different authorizers? And there are different requirements then that they would want as a result of being, you know, different authorizers on the same contract. There's a lot of logistics. So our next steps, we're in the phase one. I look at these as two phases. Uh, phase one is just kind of get through July first, uh, or get to July first with the transition to state charter special schools, and what are the the steps that need to happen there? As I mentioned, we've been in meetings and regular communication with both the schools, the commission, our internal teams, thinking about the support considerations that they're going to need for the duration of their contract as well from the Department of Education since they are shifting from the state charter schools commission. And then, like I said, adding these schools to the alternative education advisory group, which is to us an important step as well. And then, uh, once we get beyond July first, really then the 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 meat of the work happens in terms of what does this look like long-term? Because while we talk about these particular schools or these three schools right now, because that's where what the legislature was really kind of focused on at the time, they did include language that allows for additional providers of this type to to come in and as charter schools. And so we need to talk about not only what does this look like for these three schools, but if we had additional petitioners that came on board and decided they wanted to utilize this type of model, what that looks like as well. Are there any final questions?
Do you have any questions for Tiffany? Cover a lot of ground in a short period of time.
As I said, it was an introductory section. What I anticipate is that we'll have, probably have, uh, the three schools come probably in May to talk to you a little bit about, uh, their their roles, what they do in the conversations that they've had related to this legislation.
One of the things that, and this is a comment, not a question, but, um, we're, I had, you know, we had our first meeting of the committee in in March. And we reviewed three petitions, and they were all not challenging in terms of whether we should approve them or not. But this is gonna get a lot more complicated as we move forward, especially with districts like these credit, I call them credit recovery high schools, and I'm probably not doing them a service, but I think now that we know who I'm talking about, foothills, mountain ed, and mountain area and coastal plains. We we do need to have some kind of a rubric for approving petitions going forward that I think we could reach some consensus on so that we have a standard for what a renewal should, you know, and and then and be able to share this with districts that are two years away from their petition renewal. So that they kind of know what our, what, how high is the bar gonna be? In in terms of, you know, getting your petition renewed, everybody agreed on their first petition that we would do this in exchange for this flexibility. And, um, and I think if we had, we need to have some sense for, some comparability between this, even with these challenging stu-, I mean, these districts that serve a challenging student body. So I I hope that over the next twelve months or nine to twelve months, we're gonna start working together to develop some and and with some feedback and some staff, some kind of a rubric and a and a some benchmarks that all of our charters can know that we're going to be looking at. So that as we move forward, um, it's just a personal thing for me. I I I remember when I was on the petition side, we exchanged higher expectations for greater flexibility. So that's that's at the at the end of the day, that's what we're doing. Well, how are we doing on those higher expectations? Because we've gotten the flexibility. And, uh, but I, but on these particular three, I I keep having to remind myself that, and they'll, you'll hear them talk about this in May, and Tiffany, you can probably testify to this as well. This may be the last chance for these kids. And because they're already working, they're already overage, they're way off track to graduate, they're never gonna make it by the time they're turned twenty-two unless we offer them some special help. And expecting an eighty-five percent graduation rate from a test po- a test population, it probably would be zero if we didn't do anything or offer them some kind of extra support, probably not realistic. But finding out, well, what that is is another, is, you know, it's another matter. So I, it's gonna be a challenging, uh, project to come up with some kind of metrics that we can stay with, but I think we can do it.
Very, very good points. Um, and, uh, you know, under your leadership in that committee, I'm sure you're gonna come up with a great rubric. Uh, yeah, but, you know, the question becomes is that at what point in time, uh, you know, is there, you know, now, I'll just give you a personal example. When I was on the Cobb County Board of Education, there was a renewal that came up. And the renewal came up and it was wanting in many areas. And they actually, you know, at the the local level, we denied the renewal. So there's also like checks and balances for, you know, not necessarily the credit recovery kind of stuff, but, you know, charter schools in general. And, um, you know, their petition, you know, they they touted successes in what they were doing. And I think seven of the ten metrics were attendance-related. It had nothing to do with the academic side. And so it's a question about, you know, are you doing what you say you're going to do? How can you demonstrate that you're getting it done with consistency? Now, the challenge, of course, is the pandemic has made things rather interesting for everybody, you know. And so you get, we kind of have to figure out how to bridge that gap, but the rubric's gonna be really important for us.
And we do have a rubric that we utilize internally as we do reviews for the charter schools.
Yeah, we do.
Um, but I guess the question is around the the rubric for, like, what is the board looking for specifically when it gets to you? Then, yes, we can certainly work with you guys to pull that together.
It will be, but then at the end of the day too, we've gotta remember, it's like what we were talking about with Alvin, and what you you just mentioned. What's the purpose? How, who are these schools serving? So I'll never forget the first, when I was first appointed to this board twelve years ago, I was on charter committee. And there was one on paper, one of the very first ones we were renewing, I'd kind of already made up my mind. This one's not performing where it needs to be. Might ought to vote not to renew this. The principal, I'll I'll never forget it. Principal got up and she was defending what the school was doing and who they were serving. And she said, a good example was, she called a child's name, and she said it was about ten thirty, and child's walking through the door. It's like, where are you? Why, why are you late again? And she said, that little boy looked up at her and said, Ms. Jones, Ms. I've been waking my, I've been trying to wake mama up for three hours to bring me to school. I will, I like school, I wanna come, and I've been trying to wake mama up to get me to school. Those kids, that's their chance somehow. So we gotta remember, that's why we're a board, and that's why we have hearings, is to look at them individually.
All right. Well, Tiffany, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, I hope everybody got a lot out of today so far. Um, and we actually have a bus that's waiting to take us over to the Mary. Um, and we actually have a bus that's waiting to take us over to the Marietta uh High College and Career Academy. So uh if you want to wrap up your things, we're going to go from here, there, and from the College and Career Academy back to the hotel. And uh I will have uh some other information for you with regard to the reception and this evening's activities. We're coming back here. By the way, um, tomorrow, you're driving yourself here. Um, so uh the address is one fourteen Windy Hill Road, one fourteen Windy Hill Road in Marietta, Georgia. Uh, yeah, yeah. All right, so we'll see you on the bus.
You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here.